Good evening. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock. And I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting on June 12th to order. Unless there's an objection, seeing no objection, the meeting is called to order. Councilman Secunder, can you lead us in the pledge and the invocation, please?
Please rise for those that are able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Harris.
Just a moment of personal privilege before we get into the public comments, I will be recusing myself from item number fifteen as I am an employee of the applicant.
Thank you. Public comments, each speaker will have three minutes. It's public comment, okay. Each speaker will have three minutes. When you get to the microphone, please adjust so you can speak into it and introduce yourselves. The first speaker is Ruth. I'm gonna butcher your last name, U L. When you come up, just introduce yourself, please. You'll have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Ruth Yule and I'm a resident of Four Oaks. I live on Four Oaks Drive, which backs up to Peeler Road. And I really am not happy about what's going to be going on. I understand that our houses backing up to Peeler will have all the trees removed, if I'm not mistaken, thereby disrupting not only our property values, but also our security and making our lives much noisier. I cannot believe that the council is unaware that there are frequent drag races on Peeler. And once the trees, which offer at least a modicum of noise abatement, are gone, it's going to be worse than ever there. And I'm not happy that the fact that we have so many speeders going on and it seems like nothing is done about them. In addition, in order to slow down traffic on Peeler, I think it would be better to take some money out of the budget that is here in order to add a light because there is no light between Winters Chapel and Tilly Mill. And a light would show, slow people down. I don't like the idea so much of stop signs along that entire road because people will go right through stop signs, including where the one crossways is. So is our city going to be putting up a soundproof wall? Are you going to purchase my property for what, at least what I paid for last year? I can't, I can't tell you how Paul, so many of us are at this imposition of this so-called plan and other things. And one last suggestion, take a small amount from this so-called plan to order a sign to be permanently installed out front of this building to alert residents of Dunwoody to an upcoming council meeting at least one week ahead of time. That would, that would be a big boon for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Echikson.
Hi, my name is Nancy Echikson. I live next to the JCC. And I'm here first to thank you, Mayor Deutsch, for what you said at the last meeting when the slump was being discussed about noise abatement on the entire perimeter of the property of the JCC. And I have to thank Jared Powers because he has absolutely bent over backwards to address every problem and every request that I have, even to the point of sending the emails to check in on me and see how things are going. And after years of being treated really rudely and disrespectfully by the center, well, more like a gnat that they were trying to flick away, they have absolutely come around to a point that I honestly can't believe the change in five weeks. So thank you.
Thank you. Bob Hickey.
Madam Mayor, Council, my name is Bob Hickey. I'm a resident of Dunwoody. I'm here tonight to talk against item number twenty on the agenda, which is creating a new staff position in the Public Works Department at an estimated cost of $190,000 per year. I'm not against Public Works, but I think the creation of that position, and it doesn't say how it's to be funded or whether it's taking money out of the contract positions. But I've against it because it effectively de facto's the police department. You're taking $190,000 from the could be resources available to the police department. The information that I have shows that in 2019, there were sixty-two authorized police officers, not counting the civilians. In 2023, the manpower is sixty-four, and I think there's some vacancies in that. So it's gone from sixty-two to less than sixty-four in four years. That's pretty de facto defunding the police department. The money available in the police department budget in 2019, from the information I have, which is very difficult to get, is $10.6 million was the money spent in the police department in 2019. The budget in 2023 is 13.2 million. That's about a 30% increase. In the same period of time, from 2019 to 2023, Public Works, which is where we're creating this new position, went from 9.2 million to 21 million. Twenty-one, nine to twenty-one. According to my Alabama math, that's about 128% increase. The city's spending in that same time period went from 37.8 million to about 62 million, which is a 64% increase. So in both cases, direct comparable, the police department is being short-changed. And we all know that. There are incidents in our individual neighborhoods to where the police cannot respond on a timely basis. So I think the better allocation of the resources from the Public Works Department is to put it into the police department and do not de facto defund the police. Thank you.
Bob Facella.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bob Facella. I live at 4894 Summerford Drive. I'm also the president of the Dunwoody Homeowners Association. I want to address an item near the end of the agenda. Concept design for the Peeler Road path between Winters Chapel Road and Windward Hollow Park. As a member of the sounding board for the PATH Foundation, I sat in on six-hour-to-two-hour-long meetings. I can tell you unequivocally, this project was slated for the other side of Peeler specifically, so it would not destroy the backyards of eleven Four Oaks homeowners whose property's back up to Peeler Road. Greta DiMio, the executive director of PATH Foundation, was adamant about not destroying these homeowners' property as well as destroying the tree canopy. But don't take my word for it. Just take a look at page sixty-one of the Dunwoody Trail Master Plan. So what changed? Was the work of the PATH Foundation ignored? Simply an exercise to throw away taxpayer money? Perhaps the staff isn't privy to the master plan? I'm an educated man, but I can't speak intelligently about this. I know the DHA is strongly opposed to the project on the north side. And it certainly gives me and perhaps the entire DHA Board pause concerning paths being part of any bond referendum in the fall. Because if the path is put on the north side of Peeler Road, it tells me that the city can't be trusted. By putting the path on the north side of Peeler, you would have the same credibility or lack thereof as our officials in DeKalb County. And just a little reminder, that's a large part of why we became a city, so we would have representation we could trust. Michael Smith, you're a good public official, typically well-intentioned, but this is just wrong. Council, let's make sure we do the right thing. Once you lose the trust of the public, it's awfully damn tough to get back. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Taylor.
Tom Taylor, 4926 Four Oaks Court here, speak about the Peeler Road thing. This kind of reminds me of the Baptist church thing. It's not there, it's not there, and all of a sudden it pops up on an agenda. And thank you, John Henigan, for putting it on your blog, because a lot of people wouldn't have known that otherwise. You know, this, it reminds me of the Baptist church because how quickly this, you coveted that, tried to take from something of value from someone else in the dark. And how quickly you reversed course when it came to the light of day because you knew you had it wrong. I predict this is gonna end up in the same manner. City Council in particular, a couple of comments, Councilman Lambert, this is just a plan, not what might end up happening in a meeting in our neighborhood. Councilman Secunder, just lines on paper. This is just a plan. City staff was 180 degrees out from that. Rishi, this is where it's going. Michael Smith, this is where it's going. Any paper, Michael Starling, this is non-negotiable, the pass or non-negotiable. Well, now it's happening, and people have watched it. This fundamental lack of trust, lack of productive communication, and deceptive styles probably gonna cost you your bond referendum as well. And thank you, Bob Facella, for speaking for DHA. I speak as a member of the executive board there as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy Ziegler.
Good evening. Normally I wouldn't do this, but since we're a second read, I don't get the opportunity to address you later on MJCCA. And I wanted to let you know that we went forth from our last meeting, the deferral you gave us, and pretty well cured everything you asked us to look at. Mr. Henigan, you were correct. The legal description was off. We fixed that. Ms. Lotenbacher, you asked for the trip generation numbers. We got those for you. And most importantly, it was made very clear to me by this board that you expected us to do something about noise and not just use barriers, but come up with a mechanism which would allow the city, us and neighbors, to make sure that what we agreed to was in fact enforced. So what we have done is put in place a system wherein, and this is in the conditions of zoning, wherein we will do a, we've already done the base measurement, but as soon as we start using those courts, we'll do another. And we're going to continue into the future for some period of time to make sure that we aren't in fact abiding by the limits. So we have provided that to the city, even if the city's ordinance isn't as strong as you would like it to be. This is a condition of zoning. And therefore, we will be observing what we have committed to do. And I just wanted to let you know that, and obviously you heard that we have been trying to go out to our community and our neighbors and make sure that they can live with what we're doing, not just with this application, but in terms of generally getting along with the community. So I just wanted to let you all know that that's what happened, and thank you for the opportunity. This extra time actually helped. Thank you.
You're welcome. Jared Powers. Okay. This concludes the cards I have. We will have another public comment section at the end of the meeting, should people remain. Council, I wanted to take a moment of privilege. Chief, can you, generally, we don't interact with public comment, but I wanted to just clarify things as it relates to the police department, because there's a lot of people here. And this is exactly how sometimes rumors get started. So Chief, there were some points made, and I, we haven't, I haven't done the math. I can't dispute the math. I wanted to ask if council has denied you any positions? You know, city, like we have, you've come to us, we worked through the budget process. The current concern is some unfilled positions, correct?
Sure, we have right now five positions that we are working to fill. And then, once we fill those positions, we'll be a full staff.
Right. And Eric, we are working through salary changes as we speak, correct, for our police department?
Yeah, that's right, Mayor. We do a, we're doing two different studies, as a matter of fact. We have a study, a salary survey that we're completing. It'll be wrapping up here in the next thirty days. And that will come back to the council and the Budget Committee first. And then we're also looking at a larger study with the police department to look at additional needs within that department. And as I'll mention in my report in a few minutes, you know, you know, crime is something we take very seriously here. We put a lot of time and effort. We work very closely with the chief. Chief has a great staff within that department. But as the community continues to grow, we want to meet those needs, and that's why we've put the money into those studies, so we can then fund those and have the appropriate staff.
And the difference between nineteen and twenty-three, can you talk about that a little bit? I know I'm putting you on the spot.
Difference in the budget?
The number of officers.
Oh, the number of officers? I think during that time, we've added a couple of officers.
Right.
We have asked for a special investigations unit, sergeant and three officers, to help us deal with some of our violent crime and drug crime, which, you know, violence seems to follow drugs. And that was looked at through the ARPA-2 money, and I think that's still being considered. I think we're waiting on the study.
Right.
Before we move forward. I certainly, at the retreat, shared with the council, kind of the status of the department and the needs of the department at that retreat, including our increase in crime and things that I thought we needed to improve the department.
Right, and we're waiting for the completion of the Barry Dunn study to make budget decisions and for you to make final recommendations based on what the consultants, and that should be sometime this summer, as I understand it. The salary study is first, that's coming.
That's correct.
And in the meantime, our benefits and our salaries rank pretty high up there right now.
Correct.
Consider, I mean, we're certainly in the top five still. And our benefits are top of class, our housing's tight in.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Just to piggyback on your comments, too, I just, I just want to point out, because people may not be aware that when you're talking budgets and funding for departments and things, not everything, it's not just one pot of money that everything comes from. Certain funds are restricted to be used for certain things. I don't know what the public, the source, so I can't speak specifically to the numbers that were used. But with the Public Works projects, a lot of that comes from SPOSS and from grants. That money must go towards capital projects. It can't go to salaries. SPOSS here in Dunwoody, in DeKalb, goes to Public Works and it goes to police. But it goes to equipment for police, so police cars or other equipment that the police department needs. So I just think it's important to note that not all of our revenue can just go to wherever we want. Some of it has to go to certain projects, and that's probably why the capital, I'm sorry, the Public Works was so, so high.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Right, next is city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will say, with this report, I want to say that it is, it's a proud moment to be the city manager with the staff. We have an excellent group of individuals that we've assembled over the years, do the work of the city, and Chief is certainly one of the outstanding department heads we have as well. And I do want to thank him for his nearly forty years of service in law enforcement. So, Chief, thank you. The upcoming events in Parks and Recreation, I want to point that out to you, the different things we have coming up, May through September. I'm not gonna read those out. They are listed there in the report. The Memorial Day ceremony we had this year was the largest and best received to date. All program participants had a Dunwoody connection. And our special guest was a hundred-and-three-year-old Doris Gutsman. And she was honored during the event. We've added a second movie for the, in July, with Parks and Recreation Month. The event will be held on the 29th at Brookrun Park and sponsored by B98.5 FM. So that's a fun event to attend there. Public Works, the Georgetown Gateway Program. It's occurring, AT&amp;T is still working on utility relocation, but at the south end of the project, the contractor completed 111 feet of stormwater pipe and installed four drainage structures. Pipe crew is having to work slowly to avoid numerous utilities in the path of the pipe. And y'all have heard me say that over and over about the utilities. You can't dig anywhere in Dunwoody within the right of way without hitting all kinds of utilities. And if you look at the picture, you'll see the different utility crossings. They're there, there are at least three or four in that one picture there. Also, Dunwoody Road sidewalk sole construction completed the extension of the stormwater pipe under Dunwoody Road. And the tallest section of retaining wall has now been complete. We did have a unique situation last week while we were cracked sealing Womack Road. The contractors mistakenly had a few vehicles that got into the sealant. You know, we did get in, get with the contractor and held them accountable and responsible for any, I'm gonna call it damage. It damaged the tires of the car, so we were able to get with the contractor, they replaced the tires on the citizen's vehicle that had the material on top of those. The Winters Chapel Trail Phase One, the project's been substantially completed, and the contractor will be working on completing any corrective work in the final punch list. And also, to date, we've done over 4,000 feet of pipe rehabilitation and 300 of it was done since the last meeting, 300 feet, that is. Moving on down into community development, the city of Dunwoody was awarded $100,000 state grant through improving neighborhoods outcome in disproportionately impacted community program to provide a multi-use trail connection between Cherry Hill and Edson Road. And that's a piece that we've been working on for about a year to try to get that little connection put in, so we got a grant to do that. Also, under economic development, we unveiled the Dunwoody MARTA Station Parking Deck mural in coordination with the perimeter CID and MARTA. If you have not had a chance to drive over there on Hammond at the MARTA station and look back at the parking deck and see the mural that was put up. And that's here again, Council, this is one reason that I love y'all's vision and the staff to be able to implement that kind of project and coordinate it and get it put in. And it's just a, you'll see more of that type of artwork going on in the city in different forms and fashions, but that is a unique way to display artwork on that building or on that parking deck. Communications, Two Bridges Park, it has some opening videos, had over 10,000 views, tons of engagement and great media coverage as well on that park. Here again, it was a beautiful day when we did that opening over there at that first new park in the perimeter area. The police department, the department partnered with the Governor's Office of Highway Safety as part of the Click It, our Ticket campaign for large-scale traffic enforcement detail. The detail was comprised of officers from our department, several other agencies, targeting Shambly Dunwoody Road and Mount Vernon and Cotillion and North Shaliford. Eighty-seven citations were issued, including sixty for hands-free violation, ten seatbelt violations, and various other offenses, and then three people were arrested. Here again, as you read through the police portion, there are several items that I highlighted in here. I'm not gonna read them all out, but there is a, you know, we did see a downtick in crime during COVID, during the pandemic, but that is resurfacing, is coming back up. The chief is doing a great job with his department in keeping that there, but it is a, I'm looking forward to those studies I mentioned earlier, because as the city continues to grow with High Street and Campus 244 and other developments that are gonna come in, we do need to have the right size agency, and that's something I know the council is well aware of, to do that. Finance, the assistant, we have a new assistant finance director position, and Richard, is she here with us? Okay. And she started last Monday, Delicia Robinson. She comes to us from the city of Atlanta. She'd been with them for over ten years, many years of experience. We're excited to have her as the assistant finance director, and then she'll work under Richard Plato. The, also, we received notification from the Georgia Finance Officers Association, GFOA, that the city received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the 2021 Annual Conference of Financial Report. And we also received notice that we also got the GFOA for the city received for the distinguished budget presentation award for the 2023 budget. So those are awards. I think we've had those pretty much ever since we've been a city, and it's something we continue to do. We've had, actually, Richard is actually the fourth finance director we've had at the city, and we've continued those throughout the change in leadership in that department. The monthly financial report for April 2023 can be found at the link. It's within your document. And all this also is available to the public, if y'all want to click on any of these links. Municipal court, the department disposed of over 615 cases and reset 32 cases within that department. Here again, I will brag on the court and how efficient they are, and that's not just the staff, but also the judges that we have and our solicitors as well to really move cases through and not have people be delayed. The clerk also, for the last month of May, processed over 500 open record requests in the month. That's something that, you know, we track those very closely. Any type of request is considered an open record, and Sharon in her department, Mr. Shealy, they do a great job on fulfilling those requests. The last moment, the thing I'm gonna mention is the city filled two summer internships with one in May and the other will begin in June. So we do have those that we work with. We do have those programs active, if anybody's interested in that type of program. But with that, Mayor, I along with my staff are happy to answer any questions.
Okay, anybody? Questions on the side? Stacy, go ahead.
Is for Michael Smith, the Shambly Dunwoody-Womack intersection. When is that second lane that, where you're gonna be able to turn right on red going to open? I noticed it's there. It has cones on it.
Soon. The whole project's scheduled to be done by the end of summer, so. But they've made a lot of progress in the last few weeks and should be able to get that lane open soon. I don't have an exact date, but I can find out.
Thank you. Joe.
Yeah, Eric, thank you for the detailed report, going back a few years ago. If you see the level of just reporting, what we show, what they've done and what's coming to do by each department, it is transparent. It is showing us being responsive. And I just want to note, you know, I went over to the food truck Thursday, sponsored by our great host and partner with the city, Dunwoody Homeowners Association. Appreciate their partnership for that, as well as the Saturday morning Farmer's Market and the Fourth of July Parade coming up. We're looking forward to that, too. But I'm over at the park and I noticed, oh, here's a new little piece of cement. Here's a little bitty new retaining wall. Here's a little piece of new fence. These are things that are kind of just going on behind the scenes, and it's called parks maintenance, right? And we look at what we do, and we are keeping our parks maintained, which is great, because if you look at the city, other cities, you can Google, they have issues. They can build new things, but they don't maintain what they have. And so we are maintaining and keeping that quality standards and updating and upgrading as needed for water storm runoff and so on and so forth. So I notice up in the front there by North Peachtree, and they have that little, there was, there was some work done, right? And so on. So it's just these little nuances of continuously improving, and I really, really appreciate that and appreciate Brent Walker and the staff for doing that. And the second note is, if folks would just love, I'd love folks to go over to Winters Chapel by Dunwoody Club Drive and take a look, because you compare what that is there now versus Shambly Dunwoody by 285 now. And it's not if, but when, those projects will be complete, and you'll look at what's finished over at Winters Chapel by Dunwoody Club. It's very attractive. We have landscaping, we have trees, we have lamp posts that are lit at night. It's very attractive. We put in privacy fences. We put in landscaping over at Winters Chapel. And could you imagine, we'll see, we'll be seeing that at Georgetown as well, along Shambly Dunwoody. And can you imagine that will be in other places soon? So I appreciate the staff doing that and doing the work. Thank you, Eric.
Anybody else? So nobody else? Okay, thank you. Council, I'd like to move the consent agenda before public hearings, if that's okay. I think, do I need a motion for that change? Or, no, okay. No, okay. Does anybody object? So we're gonna do the consent agenda first. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Councilman Henigan.
I'd like to remove item number fourteen, the funding authorization for the Nature Center.
Okay.
It's an $800,000 expense. I'd like to listen about it.
Okay. We will make that just keep it at fourteen. Thank you. Let's keep it at fourteen. Okay. And I'd like to recognize, because there's a large crowd here, that with the passage of the consent agenda, we will be passing, accepting the donation from the Vietnam War Memorial. We appreciate everyone's patience as we got correctly understood the design you were moving forward with. And And um, and so I just, we very much appreciate your efforts to bring this to Dunwoody. And um, we're very honored to host it. And we know it will be a lovely addition to our existing veterans memorial. All right, this is an action item.
Move to approve.
Second. So madam.
Yes. Oh, amended.
So the motions to approve the consent agenda.
Minus.
Item fourteen.
Yes, so will you take back your second? All right, Joe, redo your motion.
Uh, move to approve consent agenda items five through thirteen.
Okay.
Second.
All right, um, any additional discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously and thank you again to the organizations that are bringing this uh, memorial to Dunwoody. Thank you. All right, now we will go back to the public hearings. Oh, I don't see anybody.
Uh, good evening, mayor and council. Presentation is up. Uh, for those that are unaware, this is summertime. So for all municipal governments, county governments and school systems, it's time to adopt millage rates. It's a tradition throughout Georgia and city of Dunwoody is just like all of them. Uh, one of the things we do have this year that's somewhat unique about Dunwoody is we seem to have been the first out of the gate for public hearings. So we've had media attention that I've never seen here before on it. But I'd like to go a little bit about it just to go you how the show will go on today. First thing we're going to do is a brief presentation, which will be identical to this mornings for those that saw it earlier. And then we'll open up the floor for public comment and then questions and from the council. So starting off with it, let's first off talk why public hearings in Georgia. Now, one of the things everybody knows in Georgia is that most local governments receive most of their revenue through property taxes. It's based off the assessed value of your home times the rate charged by your government. And that amount is what becomes tax revenue. Now, here's the thing everybody needs to know. Dunwoody in twenty twenty-three is keeping the same millage rate as it was, or is proposing to, as it was in twenty twenty-two. There's no proposed increase to it. However, state law requires an advertisement that says that the city is. This is because commercial values are going up, residential values are going up, but we'll talk a little bit about those details in a second. The thing I'd like to talk about is something that's not quite apparent is you don't get to see the context of how much the increase is. For the city of Dunwoody, the advertised increase was one point five seven percent. Now, I'm not taking this from other cities. I'm, the Champion Newspaper did this for us, which is kind of nice. They took all the cities around and showed how much theirs were going up. So just to give you some of our neighbors, DeKalb Schools was thirteen point four four percent.
You need to change the slide.
Oh, no, stay.
Oh, say slide.
Okay, DeKalb School stays at thirteen point four percent increase. Brook Havens is going up eight percent, Shambly six point eight percent, Dorville's eleven point nine eight percent. Dunwoody's one point five seven percent. So to give you the context, and this will be in the next slide. The increase that we are advertising is one of the lowest of all of our neighbors, if not the absolute lowest there. So just to give you context, even though we have to advertise, it's just a small amount compared to inflation. It's well below that. Now going on to the next one, what did we have to do to follow the law here? To follow the law, we had to advertise this notice of tax increase. We also had to send out a press release in conjunction and it will have to say again, we were the first out of the gate with this because the way of our tonight's meeting fell. We had one newspaper, one radio station and one print reporter call within minutes of that press release going out. So it is uh, is as open and transparent of a number that's out there and I'm actually proud that we're that way. We also had to post it on the city's website. And this is actually the second hearing. The first was this morning and just an odd quirk, if you have two on the same day, one has to be before lunch, one has to be after dinner. That's kind of the way the rule rolls. And this is the second hearing. Also later on this month, something called the five-year ad, which shows the history of the digest over five years, the amount of tax revenue has to be posted. Advertizing like not in the legal section, but as a full pledge ad. And then one week before the final hearing, which will be in July this year, just as usually done. Okay, now let's get to the nitty gritty on this. Okay, Dunwoody's tax rate will be, is proposed to be three point oh four oh. That's the same amount that was taxed last year. Now, before that, the rate was two point seven four zero and the city last year increased the nominal millage rate. It was the first tax increase in the entire history. But here's the thing that isn't necessarily talked about a lot and we're going to talk about in a second. For homes that were here in two thousand and eight and nine, when they were incorporated. They went over a decade without any cre- increase whatsoever to their city tax bill. Over a decade. But yet the cap, the city managed it accordingly and worked with it. We're now to the point where it doesn't quite work as well. One thing to also point out with the tax increase from last year. It was dedicated to police pay increases and to closing the gaps that we had. Here's the one thing I'd like to put out as a figure out there for everybody. And we can look earlier and go back to two thousand and eight, but I'm going to go to pre-COVID twenty nineteen. The first of before these high inflation years. Inflation since twenty nineteen in aggregate has been about seventeen percent. And one of the things the city council has done in that time is specifically address police officer and detective pay. We put them into a grid system, it changed and some larger increases. During that time, on average, those officers received a twenty-five percent increase above the seventeen percent that was inflation. So council is outpacing that and making sure we're reviewing it regularly. Between the HR team, the finance team, Eric and myself, we're constantly meeting on making sure that we're competitive in pay. And that's one of the things inflationary increases allow you to do. If you don't have inflationary increases, your next thing to do is to annex and we're a landlocked city. We can't annex things, even though I've tried to invade a few of them, but sometimes you can't just grab land like you can if you're in rural Georgia for this. But the council has done the thing. They haven't necessarily expanded services, but they've made sure that those officers and the staff that we have on that are doing the job. Are here and maintained and retained. Now let's talk a little bit about how much this actually impacts a home. This is what this discussion is about. Average home in Dunwoody is about five hundred thousand. It's taxed at about a four hundred thousand dollar level because of the freeze. That's two hundred and ninety-six dollars a year. That's how much it costs the average homeowner to pay in city taxes. And for those that like a visual representation, the eighty-one cents a day you see on the screen. Eighty-one cents a day to keep your police, your parks, your roads, your planning department all operating. Now let's talk about again, comparing ourselves to other jurisdictions. Okay, one way to look at it is your city tax rate, but there's a problem with that. In DeKalb County, some cities use county services and some they use their own and some there's a hybrid situation. So the proper way to show the, the tax burden for an individual is your city tax rate. Plus your county tax rate, plus your school tax rate. Now I need to point two things on this chart that should, that are asterisks, as I call them. One is the city of Decatur. Long time ago, one of my friends back there decided they would assess values at fifty percent instead of forty. So it makes all their numbers harder to explain. I'd just like to footnote that. Then also the city of Brookhaven has different areas that are taxed at a higher level than some of the others. So in that case, you have Brookhaven, Brookhaven A and Brookhaven B. Now that we've put out that, take a look at on this chart, which are all twenty twenty-two rates. I'll say that because. Everybody's adopting them this month or next month. Dunwoody is the lowest aggregate tax rate in all of DeKalb County. It is the lowest nominal rate. Now I need to put another asterisk on there that I can't put on here without getting into some, some different things, but you can actually take a mill off of that. Every homesteaded property here, if you're a homesteaded resident, you receive one mil exemption on top of that. So your rate would actually be thirty-eight point two three three. Still the lowest. When you take the lowest number and you subtract one, it's still going to be the lowest. So we are one, the lowest tax rate in the county. Now let's take a look at your bill right here. And I'd like to point out one thing that I didn't mention this morning. There is going to be a state tax relief credit and nobody can figure out how to present that easily. So just full disclosure, we're leaving it off of this bill. Everybody will, your tax bill, it won't mean anything. You'll get about five hundred dollars off on the average home, but it's not on this current one. But I want to show this and it's mainly the two charts at the bottom. What you see here is a total tax bill for this house of about five thousand dollars, fifty-one seventy-five. Now some of that is this thing called in the second column from the right, the E-HOS credit. The E-HOS credit is about fourteen hundred dollars on your typical Dunwoody home. And what that does is it takes a penny of sales tax and it reduces your property tax bill. I want to start showing this because currently the county is forgiven, forgiving all of its general fund taxes. And all of its grady tax from this penny. Now the law stipulates those two get it first. Once it exceeds a hundred percent, it then goes to cities. We have yet as a city to see any of this, but we expect to either this year or next year. And these graphs on the next page is why I want to show that. Basically, right now, when you receive your property tax bill for your typical home, depending upon whether or not you include that E-HOS credit. The school is still the lion's share of either bill, sixty-six percent in one version, eighty-four percent in the other. And then if you look at city operations, it's between five and six percent of your bill, depending upon which way you look at it. It is a sliver of the bill. Now, I'm going to stop right here for a second. Because one of the things that has come up when we've discussed this is, okay, the city has put something on the ballot about bonds. Okay, so let's explain that. Okay, the city has placed a question on the November ballot about issuing bonds. If approved by the voters, those bonds can be sold at a later date. This will take a next council step. But the earliest that would show up on a tax bill would be twenty twenty-four. That's the early, so they will not be on the twenty twenty-three, does not affect it, has to be approved by the voters first. So that's where that stands right now. Okay, now let's talk about freezing taxes. Here's the best way to explain it. The day you purchase your home in Dunwoody, city council long ago. Put in an ordinance that says if you bought your house at four hundred thousand, it will forever be taxed at four hundred thousand. That's a freeze. So that means if you applied for it, which eighty-five percent of the residential properties in the city. Have applied and accepted this and that's about right because rental properties cannot be part of this, nor can secondary homes. So almost every city floats in the eighty to ninety percent range on that. Almost every house that's eligible applies for it and gets it. That means that over a decade, with the exception of last year, which was a point three mil increase. Dunwoody residents have been basically paying the same thing for a decade and a half. So a little bit of an increase over that time, but not much. So basically it takes an increase to the rate. For a homeowner to see a rate increase. Now what does that mean to, to, to this? We still have to advertise a one point five seven percent increase. Rental properties will see it, commercial properties will see it, if their assessed values go up, their, their values will go up and their taxes will go up. But if you're a homesteaded residential property, your taxes do not go up in Dunwoody. Okay, now let's use the rest of this to talk a little bit health checkup for the city. First thing you've got here is a graph that shows the net change in the digest. That's the value of all the property added up together and all of Dunwoody. Year over year. Now notice that it's not consistent. It's not like a, it's not going to be the exact same number every year. It just doesn't happen for any jurisdictions. However, if you take a look, we can look at two dips during here and explain them. One's a great reception and the other in twenty twenty has to do with a lawsuit where the reassessment of commercial properties was re deemed to be done by the county improperly. And that values had to decrease for that. Other than that, we still range in the four to five percent a year. There's some off years occasionally. And for the past three years, we've been above six percent net for three years running. It shows a good, healthy, stable thing. There are some people and, and uh, we've put an editorial out there. Dunwoody is doing good as far as things are health wise. Now let's look at it in a different way. Let's total the value up. So instead of year over year change, just to show you where it was. When Dunwoody was incorporated, the value was around two point four billion dollars. Today it's around three point seven billion dollars. Okay? It's significant. Over the past decade and a half, it has steadily increased. Now, are there certain dips in some years? Yes. All the dips come with a rebound. Now, stop, I need to talk again, another one of these stop in the middle of a presentation things. Dunwoody's healthy, but we keep saying we're running deficits. Okay, now this is where we're going to get just a little bit boring. Okay, we're going to start talking accounting terms and for all my accounting friends in the room, you'll have to bear with me for a second. Let's talk some definitions. We are saying that we hear people say we run a deficit. I can say for sure, since COVID started, the general fund of Dunwoody has not ever run a deficit. Has it budgeted structural deficit? Yes. Has it run a deficit? No. And you're going to see in the next slide that most of that is due to being ultra conservative on revenue projections. And what we're going to show is that by doing that, we knew we wouldn't have to decrease services, but we knew we would be prepared if revenues dipped. Now let's talk about the bottom two terms, budgeted versus actual. Again, the city has budgeted the deficits in case things turn bad and never had to use them. This is the prudent planning method. A bad city would sit down there and say, yeah, we can do this. But the city council was proactive. They said, let's low, keep revenues low, but make sure we have enough rainy day fund to cover it. So we don't have to decrease the police services. So we don't have to decrease the park services. Okay, now we get to the math part of this. And this is out there on the web for everybody to see. This is the big ugly chart with all the numbers and everything. Um, and we're going to show a summary on the next slide, but what I want to do is show how no deficit was run. Now, one of the things is this is all available through open records. And one thing about it, we're using audited numbers that are in peer review stage. And what I'd like to explain to people on that is our auditors who are independent of our financial staff. Are going over the financials right now, independent of each other and will come back to us. They look at all the schedules. They look at changes, they look at things that may need to be adjusted and they come back to us with feedback. They are in the internal review of their own process, the draft document, the numbers are available. But you know, like all good things, something can pop up occasionally, but they're pretty close to what will be released at the end of the month. Now let's go left to right over these columns, just to show everybody what's here. The column on the far left is what we expect the final CAFR number, excuse me, ACFR, the acronym has changed. The ACFR, the audit will say how it should look. Okay, now here's the fun part about accounting. Accounting is true, accounting is accurate and a lot of times it's just confusing. What is labeled as general fund here has to include what we have started to call. ARP two and cares two, but they won't let us put ARP one in there. So what we're having to do is show this to clean up the general fund. So the first column you see is what's in the audit. The second column adds in the ARP funding. Now, some cities used it to operate their cities. We technically use the same vehicle called revenue replacement. But what we did was freed up ten million of general fund funding to create an ARP two fund. Which allowed the council to do the exact same thing that ARP was intended to, to help out not for profits, to do stormwater infrastructure. To help out where it's needed in the city, but for things that are a one-time cost. So you treated it exactly the way you should. You treated it like a windfall and created a separate fund, basically lock boxed it. Now we go through three, three adds and subtracts over this. We have to add back in that ARP because it doesn't show up in that general fund column. And we had to take out ARP two and cares two, because most all of that is one-time funding. What the city did with both of those is to look at things and again, treat it like a windfall, but also look at it in different ways. You want to look at it in some cases as starting pilot programs. We have a mental health associate with the police department. It's a trial thing. We would never be able to do that otherwise. We, so we funded for three years to see how it works. Right now it's stellar. We're loving it. We're starting to see things like that. Most all of your cares money went to small business loans. A lot of your ARP money, uh, a million and a half has already gone to not-for-profits in their hands to go to direct assistance to individuals. So again, now we're at the fifth column. The fifth column there is what the general fund really looks like. And this is where it almost works like your checkbook. At the beginning of twenty twenty-two, Dunwoody had twenty-five point three million in the general fund. It earned about thirty-two point one million of ongoing revenue and a little bit more in one-time revenue. Now this is where the structural deficit comes into play. We budgeted about thirty million. Because we internally said, let's take two revenue sources and make sure we're ultra conservative. They were the digest growth. We kept it around three. It came in at about six. And hotel motel, we still are, I'm liking the numbers as they're coming in, but we kept it budgeted low for twenty twenty-two. So that way you knew you had rainy day funds to replace it. We didn't need to use it. Now look at the expenditures. Expenditures were about twenty-seven point nine million of ongoing expenditures. And two million of one time, which was a donation for the art center and the nature center, and they had come up with matching money. One for one match, can't beat that. So what you end up with is an actual raw gain and use of fund balance of two point five million. Now let's take a look at that recurring expenditures. It's about twenty-seven point nine out of the budget, about thirty million. Now, one of the things I'd like to mention with this is back with the police department. Uh, the chief is and, and HR doing all they can for recruitment, retention, we're looking at that. The police department's budget's about ten and a half million a year. A little bit of underspending, five percent is seven hundred thousand. So one of the things I applaud all the department heads here on is there's not a use it or lose it mentality. But we do allow them the flexibility of to be creative during the year goes. They can move money internally in a lot of ways to work with it. And the police department has been incredibly good stewards of what they've been allotted. There's also, as I said, the one thing, if we could wave a magic wand and fill all the positions instantly, that would happen. But it's one of those things that takes some work and we're always working on it on that. But it's one of those things that takes some work, and we're always working on it on that. So back to this, at the end of the year, there's a fund balance of twenty-seven point six million dollars. That's the amount. And, and our former finance director, love her, she would say, don't call that cash, but I like to call it cash. It's not. But we have to take some things out of that. For prepaid bills, for POs that are outstanding, you still have to reduce it, which gets you to twenty-three point nine million. That's about nine months of fund balance. City policy is four months. Now, in today's world, nine months is good. Could be better, but nine months is very good. And that's one of the things that rating agencies, if voters do approve the bond, will look at, is how healthy you are that way. But the second thing they're always going to look at is do ongoing revenues, match ongoing expenditures. And yes, at the beginning of the year, we budgeted a two million dollar use of fund balance for twenty twenty-three. However, with the millage rate you have on here tonight, that'll go up about three or four hundred thousand more because we lowballed revenue. We said three instead of six. The other thing we have yet to bring, because we want May to totally close out, is probably an additional five hundred to six hundred thousand in hotel motel tax. So we're going to look at that use of fund balance shrinking by over half at mid-year, if not more. So one of the things is, there still might be a small structural deficit, but the chance of it being used is almost nil. Now I want to go through some others. I call it just info to know what the budget's about. Because of the property tax freeze, the amount of taxes paid by commercial properties is the lion's share of the tax revenue we receive. Out of property taxes, commercial properties pay about sixty-two percent of it, residential about thirty-three, and the rest are small slivers of other parts. Now, this is because of the next slide. Dunwoody has four stand, four exemptions for homeowners that qualify. One is a basic exemption, ten thousand dollars. That's almost standard throughout Georgia. We have another one for those that qualify because of age and income, but together those are eight percent of exemptions. The one mil exemption that we're talking about making us the lowest tax rate in the county, combined with the value of the freeze exemption, now exceeds one billion dollars. If you remember, the whole value was five point three earlier. It would be six point three without this. That shows that Dunwoody residents already have basically twenty percent or so of their value. It's a little bit different than that, thirty percent forgiven before they even start on the tax bill process. Next steps for this is, as we said earlier, this is the second of three public hearings. We'll publish a five-year ad on June twenty-ninth. Hold the finance adoption in July. And with that, uh, the floor can be opened.
Okay, uh, questions, comments? Uh, Tom, oh, I'm sorry, public hearing, I'm sorry. I am sorry. All right, unless I see an objection, I'm opening the public hearing. And then council will have a chance to ask questions. Uh, first off, seek people speaking in favor of this, uh, I have to look at my language, sorry. Of the establishing the twenty twenty-three millage rate. Um, all right, and then we'll have ten minutes for each side, and then people speaking against the twenty-three, twenty-three millage rate. Just approach the microphone and you can line up in the middle. Um, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, you can approach the microphone, Mr. Ickey. I think you're first.
Thank you, madam. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Bob Ickey. I'm a resident of Dunwoody. Uh, very, 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 very much opposed to the continuation of the millage rate that was established last year of two point, uh, three point oh four. I think it ought to be rolled back, okay, to the previous rate of two point seven oh. Uh, and I can tell you two or three things. Last, the, this meeting last year, I happened to have my notes with me, was, was on July eleven. Just happened to be a year and a day ago. And I have my notes with me, and the previous speaker who was making the presentation, I thought he was going to have the big one, okay? He kept talking about, in fact, he talked about it. He mentioned it six times about structural deficit. We have a structural deficit. We're going down the tubes financially. We have a structural deficit. In fact, the presentation that he made a year ago said that the structural deficit was going to be one point one million dollars, okay? Now, the presentation that he just made, okay, magically, oh, just magically shows that there is a structural gain in the budget of four million one hundred ninety-five thousand. Now that's magic, okay? That is absolute magic. Now, why do you get to that magic? Well, the first thing you get to it is because most of the numbers that was in these reports, I'm sorry to break your bubble, but they are completely wrong. You need to check them yourself, okay? Go look. The beginning balance, okay, the, last year, last year, well, wait, first of all, there is no financial statements available, okay? You don't have a published financial statement. This stuff about, well, the auditor's about done with it. He showed in this, but in the slide he just had that the revenues from the general fund were thirty-two million and ninety-eight thousand plus some change for one-time revenues. I have from the website today, the, the, the numbers just for the general fund, it happens to be thirty-one million, one eighty-three, one forty-five. Now that's not even close, okay? Voodoo from structural deficit to structural gain. The def, the ga, the structural gain, okay, from the financial statement from the website shows a million eight forty-one. Wh- wh- where's that on the slides that your spokesman just presented, presented to you? It's not there. So I'm just telling you, you need to do the homework, okay? You're not getting straight numbers. They're all over the place. There's not many of these numbers that you can verify. I went to the, to the budget, okay, to last year, to this year's numbers, and they're all over the place. You can't get them. So I'm opposed to the three point oh four millage rate. This meeting, ha, there hasn't been a single budget committee meeting yet. How do you, how can you say we want to stay at three point oh four? Maybe if you quit defunding the police, it needs to be four point oh four, okay? You might need to raise it instead of maintain the sa, same. If you have the budget meeting, okay, and then this meeting. Okay, you might also need to get some audited financial statements. They won't be out for another month, okay? Uh, you haven't seen an audited number since two thousand and twenty-one. Two thousand and twenty-one, seventeen months ago, you saw some numbers that were audited. Okay, I wish you good luck on making a rational, sound decision with the numbers that you're getting here. They are mostly wrong, okay? We need to either roll back the millage rate or do the process in a more uniform, smart manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak against the millage rate? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. And now, council, you may ask questions of Mr. Vinicki or other staff people. Anybody?
And just like magic, I appear.
Right. Oh. Sharon, how much, it doesn't matter. We have time, right? Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
My name is Sandy Fight. I live in Dunwoody.
If you could just speak into the microphone, please. Thank you.
I'm Sandy Fight.
Thank you.
I live in Dunwoody. That was a lot of numbers. I am a layman. I did not understand much of that. What I have heard is a one point five something increase in the millage rate. But the numbers that do make sense to me are what I end up paying. And over the past two years, I am going to have a fifty-four point six increase in what I'm paying. Now, my price of eggs isn't going down. I don't know how I'm supposed to do that. I don't understand why you can raise a millage rate because it's time to raise the millage rate when the houses, the comparables are at a higher rate, and it's not our, our fault. We're sitting in our house. We paid a certain price for it. We've been paying our taxes, and then this goes up like crazy. It seems that there should be some way to adjust the millage rate down so that it won't be highway robbery. I don't, I hope I don't have to sell my house in order to pay your taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Um, as Mr. Vinicki approaches the stand, I'd like to take a moment to clarify something from the previous speaker. In fact, Mr. Vinicki, can you scoot one way or the other? Sorry. Um, so you're, uh, when you purchased your home, you should have been able to freeze your assessed value for purposes of city and county taxes. So, yeah, so we need to make sure, and we'll be glad to assist you after the meeting, or Jay can reach you after this presentation, to make sure your values are frozen. Because your values are frozen, your property, uh, uh, your prop, your city property taxes have not changed. Your school system prop and your county taxes have not changed. Your school system taxes have probably changed exponentially. I meant to pull up my bill before I came, and I forgot. Um, we suggested this morning, and I don't, Tom may have been set to repeat the conversation he had this morning. We suggest you contact your school board member, um, to ask for a rollback. The vast majority of your property tax bill should be, assuming you have the freeze, should be this, will be the, oh, do we, do we have one? Jay, can you put one up in the presentation? So. So in Dunwoody, we are absolutely, we have seen a big increase, like probably everywhere in metro Atlanta, in home prices. When you bought your house or in two thousand nine or eleven, whenever the freeze, you filed for the freeze, your value was frozen at the moment you filed for the freeze. So mo, many homeowners who've owned their homes for a long time are paying on recession era prices or from when they purchased their price. So your neighbors who purchased their homes more recently have seen a big increase. I mean, not a big increase. They're paying on a different, whole different value structure than those of us who've owned our homes for a long time. I think that's pretty clear. So Jay, can you go over this bill again?
If, if everybody looks here, one of the things that'll help out is take a look on the far right side, the tax bill numbers. And we'll just clean it up and not talk about the two that are done by the e-host credit. But the first three that have value, city operations for the city of Dunwoody, county bonds, which actually were voted on before Dunwoody was incorporated, so they're still taxed in this area, and county fire operations, which county services us for fire. Those three taxes are all frozen as far as your home values. So unless the rate changes, those numbers do not go up. And as one sees, they're approximately six, seven, just under fifteen percent or so. I'm trying to do the math in my head right there. But they're a sliver of it, and they are all frozen. Now, I will say, the county sometimes has to maneuver their rates around, so the bond probably has gone down a little bit. And fire sometimes has to go up and down depending upon the year.
Can I just, yeah, ju, what I ask people to do is just pu, look at the city operation line on your tax statement. Look at this current year and go back to the year you moved in and look at the values. And it's, they should be nearly identical. The city amount.
Yep. And if you take a look on the third column, and this is just showing the math on it, the one that's the freeze, notice the jurisdiction that does not have the freeze on it. It's school operations. So in other words, there's no moving exemption. When the house you see on the screen goes to six hundred thousand, that number for the freeze will go up for all the other jurisdictions. It will effectively neutralize it. So in, large increases in the bill, especially those above fifteen or twenty percent are, are school area additions because they do not freeze the value of their property.
All right, I'll call on Tom. And, and after the meeting, Mr. Vinicki can take a look at your bill to see, make sure that you have the freezes and the exemptions. Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Uh, yes, thank you. I don't necessarily have questions, more comments. Uh, there were, these were comments I made at this morning's, uh, meeting and hearing. Um, it's, it's always a good time to just kind of check back in, um, and put things in perspective when it comes to the, the tax bill and the tax assessment. First, since we're talking about the schools, I'll, I'll start there. Um, as the slide or the pie graph showed for the typical homeowner, eighty-four percent of the check you write on your tax bill is going to the school system. Um, if you want to affect how much you're paying in taxes, start with the school system. Uh, they are having their millage rate hearing, second hearing tonight. I did actually get, well, let me take a step back. I, um, I, I called our local school board rep, Anna Hill, last week and had a conversation with her about uh, the millage rate for the school system, if they intended to roll it back. Uh, she did not have an answer, but was worked, assured me that she was going to, uh, work with the CFO and, uh, the school system and her fellow board members to, to address that. Um, our meeting was at eight o'clock this morning. Uh, the first school board meet, meeting to talk about the millage was actually at ten thirty, so I was able to watch that online. Uh, Allison Guberts, who's another school board member, doesn't represent Dunwoody, but asked specifically the question about rolling back the millage rate. The staff did not provide an answer at that time. They said they were going to, uh, receive the questions today, and then at their third meeting, they would come back with a plan uh, in responses to the millage rate issue for the school system. Uh, there's two things with the school system I'd just like to point out. The millage rate for the school system is twenty-three point zero eight. Uh, the state of Georgia actually has a cap for education of twenty mils. Uh, now you may say, wait a minute, Tom, the number you just said is over that. Yes, it is. Um, there are a hundred and eighty school systems in the state of Georgia. Three are above the, the the state cap. There is a provision that, uh, some were allowed in, uh, because of prior things, uh, with DeKalb. It was, uh, years ago, DeKalb operated a, a technical college that later became, uh, perimeter college, which is now Georgia State. However, when it became perimeter college, the state took over operations for that. DeKalb County School System was no longer, uh, paying to operate that campus, yet they kept the additional millage. They never, uh, removed that. Uh, that is why we're above the cap here in DeKalb. Uh, there, um, I, I forgot if I mentioned this. There are three school systems in the state out of a hundred and eighty that are above the twenty mil cap, DeKalb, Muskogee, and, uh, and Rockdale. And, uh, so, and, and again, just to put things in perspective, the amount they are over the cap is more than the city charges for all of our entire millage. Our millage is three point oh four. The school system is above the state cap by three point oh eight. So if you want to impact how much you're writing in taxes every year, I would strongly recommend reaching out to your school board rep and perhaps attending the school board meetings as well, uh, for them attending their millage rate, because that will have the biggest impact. I'd also now, now, enough, enough about the school system. I'll go back to the city of Dunwoody, because that's what we control. Um, and enough has been made about the, the freeze and everything. I, I like to do kind of a put things in perspective type of thing, and I always look at my tax bill, which I have right in front of me right now. And again, to put in pers, I think, in my opinion, the city has always been good stewards of our tax dollars. I think we do a tremendous job. Have the lowest aggregate rate in the county, uh, provide tremendous services and value for what we charge in taxes. And again, to put this in perspective, um, uh, one of the other items that appears on your tax bill is your annual, uh, sanitation fee uh, for once a week trash pickup. And it is almost identical to city tax, what you pay in city taxes. For my home, and everyone's house is a little bit different. For my house, I pay exactly eight dollars and eighty cents more for police, paving, parks, and all of this services the city provides on a daily basis. Eight dollars and eighty cents more than I pay for once a week trash pickup. So again, I'm not trying to bash the sanitation department. They do a good job. But it's, again, it's, I think it's a, a good reality check, and to put things in perspective of the services and the value you're, you're getting back for that. Um, I'd also just like to point out, uh, because the issue of bonds did come up. If the voters do approve a bond referendum this fall, uh, the additional millage that would be assessed to, to pay for those bonds, for homesteaded properties, we would still have the lowest aggregate tax rate in the county of, uh, in DeKalb County. So again, that's just putting things in perspective of, of just, just where we are. We are, we are the best value, uh, in the county. We remain that, and our millage rate is not going up, so. I think that's all I have to say right now. Thanks.
Okay. Anybody else? Joe?
Yeah, just what I, what I used to show was, I moved in, in two thousand eight, our house, and so I take my two thousand nine property tax statement. I had printed off, and I pulled out my twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-one, and the city amount was the same. And it, the city amount, the line. So I just ask folks to look at that city amount, and, and that's the value you're getting. Thank you.
And also, Jay, when we're talking about the one point something percent increase, one point oh, was it one point oh?
One point five seven.
Five seven. That is not a millage rate increase, correct? That is a digest.
The, the, the technical definition, I'll get very technical on this one, is the, the the forced advertisement of increased revenue above the rollback rate.
Right, okay, thank you. The millage rate for the city stays the same as it was last year. Okay, uh, John?
And my question goes directly to that. What is the financial amount that we are excess revenue over the rollback rate?
Over the rollback rate would be about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, which would be considered for back to that structural deficit, ongoing revenues, but it's one seventy, about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand.
All right. And is there any guesstimate? I guess I'm just looking for police raises and ongoing expenses. I'm thinking that our next budget will have excess uh expenses for police in excess of that amount.
Uh, yes, generally, I, I want to, I'd have to actually go back, but I think in the typical, as we call it, pay packages, we're looking at between three and in some of the past two years, we've done larger ones, but between three and five hundred thousand dollars a year.
So you can think that the excess revenue over the rollback rate will basically be going directly for police pays?
The, it, most of the additions in the budget for the past three years have been compensation, which primarily is police officers. And one of the things the city did two years ago was change the structure of it, which created again, what I was saying, the twenty-five percent increase over the inflationary seventeen. So yes, definitely.
Thank you. No other questions?
This is not the last time we will see this. We will not vote on it. When will it be in front of us again?
Uh, July meeting.
The first meeting or the second meeting?
There is only one meeting in July.
That, that is not accurate. There's only one meeting in June.
Oh, obviously I don't have it on my calendar.
Okay.
I'm skipping that day.
The first meeting, okay. And when, at that meeting, will we have the audit at financial report?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the draft one that's under peer review is, is available to all that want it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The next item under the public hearing agenda is the first read of RZ twenty-three oh one and SLEP twenty-three oh one. The uh rezoning is in ordinance to amend the city of Dunwoody zoning classification and map for zoning conditions of lot parcel number eighteen, three forty-five, zero three, zero one seven. In consideration of zoning case RZ twenty-three dash oh one for forty-four seventy, Shambly Dunwoody Road from O I Office Institution District zoning classification to O D Office Distribution District. And Mayor would like to go ahead and read the um, the SLEP ordinance into the record at the same time, since it's under the same agenda item.
Okay.
Just one moment, I gotta switch screens.
So while you're switching screen, Madeline, will you be presenting them both?
Yes.
Okay.
Give me a minute. This is a little, okay, there it is. In ordinance to amend the city of Dunwoody zoning map for zoning conditions of lot parcel number eighteen, three forty-five, zero three, zero one seven. In consideration of special land use permit case SLUP twenty-three dash oh one for forty-four seventy, Shambly Dunwoody Road. Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So we have one property, forty-four seventy, Shambly Dunwoody Road, which is under consideration for two separate zoning actions. One is a rezoning to change the classification from office institutional to office distribution. And the second request is to allow an increase in the uh height from two stories to four stories within the office distribution district. And uh, this request is intended to accommodate the construction of a new self-storage facility. A little bit of background on this property, forty-four seventy is a landlocked parcel. It's located, uh, well, it's bounded on all four sides by I two eighty-five to the south. The uh Dunwoody Pines Retirement Home to the west, the Georgetown Shopping Center to the east, as well as a, another daycare center uh that is also landlocked to its west as well. The current zoning is O dash I, that's Office Institutional. Uh, on this map, this is an old aerial. There was formerly a five-story office building that has been demolished in order to accommodate some of the construction activities for I two eighty-five. Uh, so currently it is a vacant lot. All that's there is the parking lot. So what the applicant is proposing to do is construct a uh four-story storage facility. Uh, currently, the Office Distribution District, it allows the self-storage facility, which is not allowed in O I, but it limits the height to two stories in office distribution. And uh, the additional two stories in height is what is prompting the special land use permit. And on the right is a rendering of the proposed building. This is the site plan here. So the new structure will be built atop the existing surface parking lot. The setbacks for this lot are a front setback of seventy-five feet, a side setback of twenty feet, and a rear setback of thirty feet. The application of the setbacks is a little bit difficult on this property, considering it has no actual front property line, but it does meet all of the required setbacks. Now, if the special land use permit were to be approved, it would meet the height requirements. The lot coverage is eighty percent for this zoning district, which is the same as the O dash I zoning district, and their proposed lot coverage is seventy-two percent. Uh, the only thing to note on this site plan is that there is a seven and a half foot transition uh buffer between this property and the Dunwoody Pines property, and that will need to be adhered to. It's not uh very well represented on the site plan, but if it were to be approved during the land disturbance permit phase, we would ensure that that buffer is installed and maintained. Another note, again, it is a landlocked property, but they do have an easement to access it. And that access comes from the southernmost curb cut from the shopping center. No access is taken from the west. However, we have asked the applicant to provide an easement uh for the possibility of future connections, should the next door property owner uh allow that at some point. So that is in place for future consideration. So overall, for the rezoning portion of this request, uh, we do find it consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is an infill uh of a parking lot and a self-storage facility doesn't require a ton of parking, so they're really taking away um, that space and turning it into something more useful. It is an unobtrusive low-traffic use and for a landlocked parcel, that's right next to a retirement home, that would be ideal. Um, and additionally, like I said, with the easement, um, there's an option for future connectivity. And additionally, they are maintaining and uh, an existing pedestrian access uh between them and Dunwoody Pines, uh, which uh, I know that several of the residents of that retirement home use, as well as some of the neighboring uh townhome residents as well. So uh, that is all in line with the comprehensive plan and with the Georgetown Master Plan. Uh, additionally, uh, we find that the use would be appropriate for the site. It is less intensive than the previous office use. And additionally, um, we do find that it has reasonable economic use as currently zoned, but because of the nature of the property, it's really hard to get more of the active uses that are intended for an office institution district. So allowing it to move into an office distribution district, which allows these more passive uses like a self-storage facility, we find that to be appropriate. And then further, um, we don't find that it will have any major impact on surrounding properties. Again, it is relatively unobtrusive. It's not a high-traffic use. And it will not affect any historic buildings or place any burden on streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. And then again, with the special land use permit approval criteria, again, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. And we find that the site plan demonstrates compliance with all of the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And we don't find that the height would be intrusive. It is actually lower in height than what was previously built there. And overall, again, the hours of operation are um not going to have any adverse impacts on any of the surrounding property. And it's not in active use, so it's not generating excessive traffic. Again, they're reducing the amount of parking that was, that is currently there. And again, there's no historic buildings or sites um or archaeological resources. So the Planning Commission recommendation from May ninth was for approval of both the rezoning and the special land use permit. And both of those uh were unanimous. These are the proposed conditions. It's a relatively short list. It's standard condition of tying them to the site plan and the elevations which they provided. Uh, one other thing I failed to note earlier was that the design of the building is consistent with the design guidelines that are provided in the Georgetown Master Plan. And then second, we are formalizing uh a required sidewalk connection that I discussed earlier, as well as the easement for future connectivity. That's all I have to present for you this evening. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Um, all right. With that, I will open the public hearing first. Are we? Can we do the public hearing for both? Oh, no, the applicant gets to speak, sorry.
I'm perfectly happy to speak on both if it would.
Yes, it would be nice to speak on this.
Kathy Ziegert with Smith, Kim, Ellen Russell, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Coral Realty, uh, who owns or has managed, more precisely Georgetown for years and years. Um, as Madeline accurately said, there was a five-story office building on this property, which came down because of the improvements to two eighty-five in terms of the new lanes that are going to go from I twenty on one side to I twenty on the other. Um, as a consequence, this property is vacant. It does have some challenges in terms of access. Uh, and in fact, that those access rights are guaranteed by that easement. Uh, and for that reason, one issue that came up earlier was the question of the curb cut that was right there at the beginning or the opening of the shopping center. Uh, there's nothing we can do about that. Um, that is totally guaranteed to all of the other users of the shopping center. And if I'm not mistaken, there is a daycare center as well on the other side of where this building used to be, which also is accessed by that. So there is absolutely nothing we can do. But what we have done with this application is reduce the impact of the location of that curb cut because we're so vastly reducing the traffic. Um, the five-story office building was generating hundreds of vehicle trips per day. Uh, and certainly at, my understanding is at least a hundred and ten in the AM peak hour and approximately ninety in PM peak, which is what you want to avoid. This use is way, way lower than that. People tend to go to self-storage facilities, not at rush hour. Um, you tend to go when you're trying to take your Christmas decorations in that you're no longer using. Or perhaps you're waiting to move somewhere else and it's a one-time, I'm going to move into the facility. Um, but they don't come visit and sit with their goods. Uh, it tends to be a circumstance where they just put the stuff in there and then they will come back when they need it. Um, we do have loading docks, but they're not what you would anticipate in terms of size. They're not the great big trucks back into thing. It's really more of like a door that gets raised and people can, from a U-Haul for their cars, walk in through it rather than going through the lobby area and the like, and then elevators access each floor as well as the basement. We are a floor shorter than the original office building, so we are also less impactful in that regard. Um, we're delighted with the recommendations from both the staff and the planning commission. We're in full agreement with the conditions that have been recommended. And I would very much appreciate your support of this application. Would reserve any remaining time. I might have trouble with all.
All right, thank you. Right now I open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for the applicant? And do I do two separate public hearings? I think so, right? So this is the public hearing on RZ two-three zero one and SLEP twenty-three oh one. Um, do I hear, have anyone here speaking for the applicant? Seeing no one. Is there anyone here to speak against the application? Seeing none, I close this public hearing. And um, council, you may ask questions of Madeline or um the applicant tonight or whoever you want. Anybody have questions, concerns, comments? Uh, Joe, it's not your hand.
So um, a couple of statements. I'd like to hear more from Madeline about the staff's decision when the original condition number four about the, the curb cut on Shambly Dunwoody and what was, wh- why did legal come back and say we could not ask for that with this uh, this action?
I think you have to ask the attorney. I mean, I'm not meaning to interrupt in your welcome, but I don't think, I think Ken can answer the why of why you ca- this application is for X and they couldn't ask them to close the road driveway. Was that you or someone else making that? Okay, that's fine. Okay, Madeline, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, so for just a little bit of background, uh, within the city of Dunwoody, we have our access management plan, which stipulates a distance between curb cuts that's considered safe uh based on the speed of the road. And within, uh, on Shambly Dunwoody, I believe that safe distance is, I don't remember the exact number, but it's around two hundred feet. And so there is a conflict based on our current regulations between the existing curb cut at the shopping center and the um curb cut for the on-ramp to I two eighty-five. They are pretty close together. Um, but uh, based on our conversations with the applicant and with um legal counsel, uh, it was determined, we originally had a condition that requested the closure of that curb cut. Uh, but it was determined that there wasn't a rational nexus between the zoning requests and that request because they are two separate properties and two separate projects. So we did remove it based on that advice.
So just take it to the next layer. Are there, and maybe this will be under Kathy's realm, the other property owners and the leases there, uh, there's a legal terms and conditions with their usage and they have access to have that maintained as per their terms?
Yes, or their easement rights. And for those of you who are familiar with property rights, we call it a bundle of sticks and it's not just ownership. There's lesser forms of rights to the property, not the least of which are easement rights. And those easement rights are held by other users in the center. So if you tried to close that, it would end up being a condemnation and we don't have any control over it, so we can't offer it up either. But yes, it is by way of legal document. We provided all the D's to the city and it's my understanding that they have been reviewed.
Okay, right. Um, thanks for that question. I would, I would aspire, I know that we're going to be redoing other projects, but when we talk about best practices, two hundred feet between each curb cut, that's still crazy close and that's unsafe and uh not the best practices. Um, I noticed about the sidewalk, I'm reading the details and this might be, maybe a Kathy, I, I'm big on the pedestrian access as well. Um, that's a great supporter of that and it's teeny, teeny fine print in exhibit A. It says, it'll be done at the owner's discretion upon completion of two eighty-five managed lane expansion. So that might never happen.
Well, yeah.
So what, what do we?
We are committed to doing a pedestrian connection to the property to the west. I actually zoned that. That's a townhome community on the other side of the property line. Um, and we're delighted to have a connection and actually the senior center too. Um, if they want one, we will stub it out and that's a commitment from us that has nothing to do. We just didn't know quite where to put it.
Sure.
Because of where the managed lanes are anticipated, but we can accommodate that. We can sort of say, all right, it's not going to go beyond here and therefore create those connections further to the north.
Yeah, I love the connection, the, the stubbing it out, absolutely. And I'm assuming that would be ADA.
Absolutely.
You know, et cetera, not a bunch of steps. All right, thanks. Um, I think that's about. Yeah, that was the only question I had. Thanks.
Tom?
Um, thank you. I just let me say in general, I, I have no issue at all with this um project. Uh, I guess my first question would be from Alan. Uh, it's more of an administrative question. Um, the the conditions uh reference in exhibit A and exhibit B, we did not have an exhibit A or B. I was able to retrieve what I thought were the corresponding documents through the, the application packet uh how, because of how they were labeled in there, but uh, just when this comes back to us uh for the final vote, I would appreciate, I think it would be much more transparent and clear to have a, a separate document, exhibit A, exhibit B, and that might be in the works.
I, I uploaded those earlier today. I, I normally do that. I
Okay, okay.
Face mistake. I'm sorry.
No worries, no worries. Um, Joe's already kind of addressed the question with the entrance. Uh, you know, my current, my concern with that is uh, that is a right turn only out and, and, and in and um often, not every day, not every hour, I, I totally understand the whole thing about the traffic flow, but U-Haul trucks or other types of trucks will be going in and out of that facility. I'm concerned about the, honestly, just safety, like getting those trucks to be able to make that turn right near the exit ramp. Um, is there any other access and, and I don't know, but coming through the other part, there's another road that comes in on the other side of Taqueria that winds around and goes, which would appear to be an easier and safer access, especially for trucks. Is that something within our realm to discuss or is that, is that just people going organically to get the best route and is, is there going to be other impacts to the shopping center? I know it's the same owner, but it's different operators and I just don't want trucks pulling in by the closer to the Kroger or next to the Taqueria and it causing an issue because that seems a more logical place to pull in to get back there. Is that, was any of that discussed or addressed? I just, it just seems.
So to clarify, um, Are you saying that the southernmost curb cut should be the, should be the main entrance for accessing?
I'm concerned with safety because it's a right turn only in and out. Um, and again, with trucks and especially how close it is to the. To the interstate on-ramp. I mean, I don't even know if a truck could navigate that turn or not to get out of there and maybe they could. I I I don't know. Um, more concerned with safety, not only the people getting in and out, but people just. Driving up and down Shambly Dunwoodie Road and and we know people don't always do what they're supposed to as far as observing no right turn, no left turn. Um, and people trying to do, make a foolish. Exit out of there and and it being a safety issue. And I know there's some road. Improvements going on as part of the gateway project. I don't know if there's going to be. Is, will there be an island there? So they won't even be able to make the left. I I I don't recall exactly.
Yes, there will be an island there, so you can't turn left uh from the southernmost point. Uh, you either have to get on the highway or go straight.
And then where will be people to be doing their U-turns to get access into that drive? Those are the types of things where. It might impact other properties nearby and I just want to make sure that we. Have considered that.
Yeah, we we considered all that. That's why we chose to suggest that they close it, but uh.
They can't.
They can't.
Yeah.
Uh, but, okay. Um, but if people choose to use the other entrances, that's not, that's a private issue. That's not us, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
I don't think there's anything to stop them from using the other entrances, correct Kathy? You answered the microphone, please.
Okay, what's that?
I'd, there's not anything to stop them from using the other entrances.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, uh, and then the other question I had was um, condition three calls for an easement. Along the western property line, unless I'm reading the site plan wrong, I don't see where that's going. Because it looks like there's a driveway in a parking lot along the western. Property line. So I'm just curious where that easement is intended to go. The print on it is very, very small, so maybe it's, it's, I wasn't able to read it, but.
Um, so uh Ginger, would you mind? Uh, okay, perfect. Um, so the easement would be located in in this corner of the property. Uh.
Where's this corner?
Can see my mouse.
Okay. Okay, so the southwestern portion then, it's not, it's not going up along the western property line, but more along the southwestern, that little.
Yeah, it would allow for an east-west connection, uh, potentially if Dunwoodie Pines wherever to redevelop or allow that connection. It would be, it would go west uh perpendicular to this property line.
Okay, and and essentially perpendicular to where two eighty-five is too, correct?
Parallel to two eighty.
I mean, I'm sorry, parallel, parallel, yeah. Um. Okay, yeah, because when I read western property line, I just didn't see where that would go. Along the western property line um with the driveway and everything there. I just want to make sure we. Didn't put in a condition that we couldn't uh later exercise. So uh, thank you. That's all I have.
All right, Tom, um, Ja- John, sorry.
I reviewed the plans. Um, I understand that developers in a hard place. The building at the front near two eighty-five was torn down. And uh basically is unbuildable now. Is that correct? I mean, it's unbuildable. And the option then is what to do with the remaining part of the property, which is now the parking lot. So that back northern. Tip of the spear, what are we going to do with that property? I don't know why we need another uh storage unit location. We have a number in town. I don't know why we want it. But that's just me. But that being said, I also know what else can we put there? I mean, does a condo building along two eighty-five? Is there, what other options are there? I wish we heard other options. I wish we heard other aspects. Um. When I see storage units. In other parts of town, I look at the beautiful Sandy Springs Wine Cellar Storage Unit. At Mount Vernon and Peachtree Dunwoodie. Why do we have to get the cookie cutter? Storage unit that we're getting the graphics on. Um, I'm not sure I'm happy with the design. I wish we had better um specs that made it look a little different. Um, I saw that there were comments that were trees were requested on the western boundary and you said you would look into that. I really haven't seen the landscaping plan. How many of the trees are coming out on the east side? The south side and what's the landscaping plan? Haven't seen any of that. Um, what's the access to Ashford Academy? I haven't seen or heard from them there, your neighbor directly next to you. I don't know what their thoughts of this project are. Um, I haven't seen the access to them. I guess the road that you're. That is accessing your road also accesses theirs. I haven't seen the sidewalk to Ashford Academy. I'm trying to understand where the connectivity is to all the neighbors. I'm still wrapping my head around this whole project, but again, why do we need another storage facility? Were there any other options? Available for this piece of property. Um, sure, I'll, Kathy, I'll basically take your comments, but I'm just, I'm trying to. I'm trying to wrap my head around why that, why this development at this location, looking the way it does. I'm looking for all of that, the trees, the landscaping, the stormwater, where's the stormwater going, things of that nature.
And and I'm cognizant of normal issues surrounding self-storage. I mean, we're a million miles away from the yellow doors that we used to have with the garages going up. And I don't think this building is unattractive. I actually like it. And in terms of self-storage and the quality of the materials, I think it's up there with the best of them. That said, we're going to have to have a disagreement about that, but I assure you. Coral has been representing the property owner on this property for as long as I've been practicing law, so that's a. Way too long period of time. Um, and as a consequence, uh, they have marketed this property extensively. They knew they had a challenge in terms of where it's located, as you pointed out. I'm not sure. Yeah, a condo, another five-story office building. Um, they've tried, but they were totally unable to get to anyone else. And although it is theoretically possible. To build another office building on there, you're going to have worse problems with it than you're going to have with the self-storage. So we kind of thought this was a soft use. Not much traffic, gets closed early at night. Um, and this would be a preferable alternative to what it could be used for now.
Again, I just know of the storage unit that we put up on Schalifer. I know the storage unit kitty corner to it on the other side of the highway. Both very close by. And when we look at rezoning the needs, I'm just.
If it makes you feel better, the self-storage industry usually uses a three-mile radius and it's based on the number of people within that three-mile radius. And it, you'd be surprised at how much population generates the demand for this kind of a facility, particularly in an area like Dunwoodie. Um, where you're fairly dense in terms of population.
Again, I have, I have concerns over the 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 look of the facility, the way it looks, the glass, the the lid up, the standard. Storage facility look. Go compare it to what's at the Mount Vernon and Peachtree Dunwoodie. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Kathy. Stacy.
Um, quick question. I don't know whether it's Kathy or or Madeline on the transition buffer between. The property and I guess it's the Dunwoodie Pines. Is that mandated with our transition yard in our code? Would it has to be there?
Uh, correct. That's a mandated transition yard between an OD district and an RM district.
Okay, remind me what that needs to look like. Sorry, I've kind of put you on the spot.
Um, it's a seven and a half foot buffer in terms of width and it requires a uh wall or fence and plantings.
Thank you. And that is just on it, sorry, where does a transition yard have to go if you can?
Along this property line.
Sorry, this, like, we got you.
There's no.
Was.
Yeah.
Uh, along this western property line, just this part. This is the only one that's adjacent to the Dunwoodie Pines.
Okay, so right there. Great. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? So I just want to point out, because somehow it didn't totally get. Mentioned today is that this piece of property is the remaining parking lot. The Georgia Department of Transportation bought the building and knocked it down and, but they don't have to buy the parking lot. Georgia DDOT is only required. To buy the building. I I guess if the parking lot was on the other side, they would have had to buy the parking lot and maybe not the building. I don't really know how that works. Um, but this piece is really tricky because the easement is through a, the only way in is through the driveway. Of a grocery, of a shopping center. There's no, uh, and the, not only is there no partnership to get a con- east-west connection. That road that uh Dunwoodie Pines faces is a private road. It's not a city road. And so this is a complex connectivity challenge. I thought we were going to get a building that looked more, a little more like an office building, Kathy. Um, maybe. We're not, what we have does, I mean, I guess it's all objective and subjective, but I thought what we were going to get was going to look a little more office-like. Um, I thought that was maybe discussed when you, somebody met with Rob maybe. Um, that we were going to get something that looked a little more office building-like. Um, I'm trying to find what it looks like on the, in the application. And I'm struggling because I cannot. Exhibit B, okay, thank you. Thank you. Um. Thank you. And. Can. Can we get rid of some of the, I mean, it's all subjective, but could we get rid of some of the black? Uh, some of the sharp edges potentially? Will you check?
Yes.
Thank you, because my impression from when this was mentioned to me, and I think maybe Rob had a meeting with the applicant. That it was going to look kind of like an office building and what we have right now really looks like a storage facility.
Let me check on that for you.
Okay, and I am, I understand the challenges more than anything. I wish we could have. Because especially because of where I live, connectivity back there to the shopping center. Um, I, I hope that we can work with the applicant to provide instructions of in and out of the shopping center that are safe. Um, we actually have no, I mean, we think we know what the managed lanes are going to do to the Georgetown Shopping Center, but we really don't. And in fact, that. That right turn only lane could eventually go away potentially. Um, GDOT could have to come in. We don't really know. And so, and I'm not sure when we'll know, unfortunately.
If ever.
Yeah, so um if, anyway. Yeah, so maybe.
I will look at that for you.
Yeah, okay, and maybe John, y'all can send to Madeline sort of what y'all are talking about.
Sure.
It, okay, send it to Madeline, please. All right, anybody else have questions or comments? Thank you. Don't go far. All right, so um. Sharon. Okay. That's fine.
The next item on the agenda for public hearings. Is for RZ twenty-three dash two and SLEP twenty-three oh three. I will read both of those into the record. In order to amend the zoning conditions of lot parcel number eighteen, three forty-seven, zero one, zero one, three, eighteen, three forty-seven, zero one, zero two, one. And eighteen, three forty-seven, zero one, zero two, eight, in consideration of zoning case RZ twenty-three oh two. For eighty-four perimeter center east. One moment, I'll have the other up. In order to amend the conditions of zoning of lot parcel number eighteen, three forty-seven, zero one, zero one, three. Eighteen, three forty-seven, zero one, zero two, one, and eighteen, three forty-seven, zero one, zero two, eight. In consideration of special land use permits, SLEP twenty-three dash oh three for eighty-four perimeter center east.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening again. So. Eighty-four perimeter center east. Um, some of you are very likely familiar with this project. It uh came across y'all's desks back in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one. The case numbers for those were RZ twenty dash oh three and SLEP twenty dash oh two and they're coming back around as. RZ twenty-three dash oh two and SLEP twenty-three dash oh three, which is. A little confusing, um, keeping those straight, but. Uh, the applicant is requesting a modification of the zoning and special land use permit conditions from those twenty-twenty cases. And currently, the only change and modification that they are requesting is the removal of condition number twenty-five, which uh reads. As agreed by the developer at the March eighth, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting, the land disturbance permit must be applied for. And within two years of the date of zoning approval and.
Matt Mayor, can I interrupt?
Yes.
I'm sorry to do this, Madeline. Uh, with we're, with respect to the prior application while people are still here. You were supposed to have two public hearings. You did the one on the zoning, I think, and did not do the one on the SLEP. I think we ought to do that before.
Okay.
The record changes. So Madeline, we'll strike what you just read on number four and go back to three while Kathy's still here, please.
Okay, no problem. Okay. Thank you. That's kind of what I thought. That's why I was a little confused. Okay. Um, we need, Sharon, do you need to read anything?
I've already read this.
Okay, all right, that's what I thought. Okay, um. I'm going to open the public hearing to see if anyone would like to speak for, I need to read the title. The request to rezone four, four, seventy, Shambly Dunwoodie Road from O-I to OD with a special land use permit. No.
It's, it's the SLEP.
Right, so speak on the SLEP.
Yes.
For. Four, four, seven, oh, Shambly Dunwoodie. All right, seeing none. Um, if anyone would like to speak against the SLEP. Again, seeing none, I close the public hearing. Does anyone have questions for Madeline? In this, all right, seeing none. Um. I think we're all ready for the next item. All right, all right. You can put it back up.
You want to reread number four now?
I will. I will. Just give me a minute. Let me, I'm going between two screens. Moving to number, public hearing agenda item number four. We have an ordinance to amend the zoning conditions of lot parcel number eighteen, three forty-seven, zero one, zero one, three. Eighteen, three forty-seven, zero one, zero two, one, and eighteen, three forty-seven, zero one, zero two, eight. In consideration of zoning case RZ twenty-three oh two for eighty-four perimeter center east. And if it would be mayor less confusing, I will wait to read the other.
Yes, please. All right, Madeline, but you can present on both.
And my apologies, uh, I will be sure to create two separate agenda items in the future, just for clarity of the process. Um, but. So RZ twenty-three and SLEP dash twenty-three oh three is for eighty-four perimeter center east. Uh, they are requesting the removal of condition of approval number twenty-five, which reads, as agreed by the developer at the March eighth, twenty-twenty-one city council meeting. The land disturbance permit must be applied for within two years of the date of approval and must be issued within thirty day, thirty months of the date. Of the zoning approval or the land use reverts to what it is zoned currently. And it was previously zoned a uh commercial zoning district. Um, it was not one of the PC zoning districts. So a little bit of background, um, this is a, an old bank that was constructed in nineteen seventy-one. It is currently not occupied. It hasn't been occupied for a while. The current zoning is PC dash two C. It's in the perimeter char- uh, excuse me. The perimeter center character area and was previously a commercial zoning district uh prior to that. Um, but they've undergone a series of rezonings over the years and the most recent one was in twenty-twenty-one. To allow a mixed-use development which consisted of a maximum fourteen-story building. With a maximum of two hundred twenty-five units of age-restricted rental housing as well as uh commercial uh ground floor uses. So restaurants and retail. And this is the approved site plan in the lower right-hand corner. So the scope of this request, like I said, is very narrow. Uh, with this request, they're requesting to maintain this site plan as it is. It's. Uh, solely related to condition number twenty-five, which is the timeline. So as far as the timeline goes, uh, when they were approved in March, essentially they would need to. Have their LDP and be ready to construct in September, but currently. That timeline doesn't work for the developer. Um, it's not possible due to current financing conditions. Um, uh, as a result of, you know, the COVID-nineteen pandemic and everything, that's put um a lot of projects on hold. Um, and overall, as it relates to the criteria, um, a timeline is not part of the reasoning and special land use permit criteria. And so we don't see the removal as, you know, affecting anything um about how this project meets those criteria. Um, and uh sta- as staff, we do find it fairly problematic. So the current project is something that aligns with our perimeter goals for the perimeter center. And the way the condition is worded is it requires the land use to revert back to what it was zoned previous. And the way the condition is worded is it requires the land use to revert back to what it was zoned previously, um, which is, first of all, would be challenging. Um, it can't just automatically revert back. It does have to go back through the process. And so we do see a, a, a bit of an issue with, you know, if we were to undertake it as a city, we still have to have the permission of the property owner. And that might be difficult to get their permission to do a rezoning that they don't necessarily want. Um, so there's that, um, conflict there. And then there's the other conflict of, uh, reverting the zoning would actually be a step back in terms of bringing us closer to what we want to see for the future of Dunwoody. So currently, it's zoned PC dash two. It's one of our very few districts in the perimeter center area that actually has the zoning district that it's intended for. Um, you know, when they did the overlay and when they created these zoning districts, uh, they didn't do a blanket rezoning like they did with the Dunwoody Village. Um, so as properties redevelop, we're trying to encourage them to rezone to these new zoning districts uh, as a way to, um, encourage them to, um, align closer with our future goals and vision for the area. Because the way we implement those is through our zoning regulations. And so, um, you know, staff does find that the removal of this condition would be appropriate. Um, and we don't necessarily recommend replacing it with another timeline condition, because again, the enforcement, um, is impractical. You know, for both of those reasons, we talked to, uh, it's would be very difficult to try and force someone to rezone a property back to what it was previously. And again, it is a step backwards. So overall, um, the planning commission, um, recommended approval of both the rezoning and the special land use permit, um, and, uh, it passed unanimously. And overall, our recommendation is that all of the conditions remain exactly the same, all of the exhibits remain exactly the same. Um, I do have them all listed out here. Um, if you need to refer to any of them, there are twenty-six, so I'm not going to go through all of them. Uh, but, um, this represents, uh, the conditions striking, uh, the condition about the timeline. And if you guys have any questions about this case, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you so much.
Okay, so just for a point of clarity, this was the condition I put on the applicant, and I'm okay with removing it in the current economic environment. I am disappointed that the project has not started, but I do believe the developer is still working towards starting and getting a project completed. Um, and so I'm okay with this for a lot, just mainly because of the economic environment we're in right now. So I just wanted to be clear, because this was my condition. Anyone have any questions from Madeline? I don't, oh, the applicant. I don't know that, is the applicant here? Oh, okay, sorry. Did it again.
Good evening. Um, my name is Josh Giovanni. I'm representing JSJ Perimeter. And just want to thank Madeline for her presentation. Um, she pretty much covered the issue well for us. Um, just to reiterate, the current economic conditions have led most of our lenders and equity investors to pause on new developments for now. Due to this pause, our timelines have been extended, uh, until there is more clarity. So it is our hope that kind of as we move to the end of the year, things will open up, but we can't say for certain. And that's why we're asking the, for the removal of the condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, all right, so now I open, Sharon, will you re, public hearing for just the?
Zoning.
Zoning. Thank you.
And I've read that into the.
And you've read that into the record. So if anyone is here to speak for the modification of the zoning conditions of cases RZ twenty oh, three, uh, please approach the microphone. Okay, seeing none. Um, is anyone here to speak against the changes of the zoning and special, no, just of the zoning of RZ twenty zero three? Please approach the microphone. All right, I see none. So unless there's an objection, I close the public hearing. Are there any questions from Madeline or staff? Oh, John, go ahead.
Can I ask about, uh, special condition number fourteen, in the sense of the twenty thousand dollars to extend the southbound turn lane that turns left from Ashford Dunwoody Road to perimeter center east? What's the status of that? We're now several years down the road. This may be going on forever. Is that road and that left turn lane going to be happening anytime soon? Should the developer be paying that twenty thousand dollars sooner rather than later? What's the status of that turn lane?
So I, my understanding is that.
Yeah, the impact, um, was from the development. So until the development happens, um, there's no need to pursue it.
So are we, the city, doing any left-hand turn lanes prior to the development going in?
I don't know, so, um, I'll ring Michael Smith's here, so.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out, we're going from possibly tight timelines to whatever we get around to a type timeline. So I'm not sure when the city is going to put in a turn lane and whether the twenty thousand dollars is going to be worth twenty thousand dollars when the development happens.
Yeah, there's already a turn lane there. I think it's just extending the turn lane.
Okay.
And that was dependent upon the development happening.
All right. And as far as legal's representation of the clause being inappropriate in the sense of reverting it back, counsel, is there any opinion on that in the sense of the rollback of the condition?
I, I don't, I, I want to be careful about commenting during, uh, the, the application at this time. But I would say that is what the ask is from them.
Right, I'm just, when I think of projects, I think of High Street that was on the books for twenty-plus years and is finally getting developed. I prefer a sunset date, if it's legal to do so. Unsure if it's legal to do so, or the ramifications of it. But I would, I mean, I'm just trying to understand.
Been told that the applicant has to accept the condition in Georgia.
Right.
So it's not, it's not something we can write, Richard. I mean, that's what we've been told, or we can vote against it, I guess.
That's what the previous city attorney told us.
Okay.
I, I do not think they're legal, so.
You don't think what, the deadlines are legal?
Right.
Right, zoning is with the property.
It's either good zoning or it's not good.
Right.
And it sounds like the applicant's waiting on financing, which hopefully does not take, right, you know, five more years. I mean, would the applicant be okay with a four-year, five-year date from today?
The app, the applicant can come to the microphone and answer questions.
Yeah, I, I would say that we have significant investment in the site already. So i- it's our goal to get this done and, and build the project as of. We've put in significant money in architecturals, purchasing the land, so this is something we want to do as priority for us.
Okay, I'm just thinking through. Thank you for your comment.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Okay.
So, um, I was gonna say, yeah, I, every time I know people leaving Dunwoody because they want to downsize. So there is a market here. Uh, I don't know where you're getting your financing, but I know people that pre-sale. And if you put a website out there, and it's, it's a rental, apologize. See, see, we, we're looking for owner occupied too, by the way. All right, we are, we are. So if, if this was owner occupied condos for, for residential for buy, you, you could pre-sale that, by the way. I just let people know that. So, um, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now I need to do, does Sharon need to read the SLOP?
Yeah, just make sure the record's.
Okay.
In order to amend the conditions of zoning of lot parcel number eighteen, three forty-seven, zero one, zero one, three, eighteen, three forty-seven, zero one, zero two, one, and eighteen, three forty-seven, zero one, zero two, eight, in consideration of special land use permits, SLOP twenty-three dash oh three for eighty-four perimeter center east.
All right, so I am opening the public hearing. If you're here to speak in favor of SLOP twenty-three oh three, please approach the microphone. Seeing no one. If you are here to oppose SLOP twenty dash, no, twenty-three. I'm confused again, I'm sorry. Three oh three. Okay, twenty-three dash oh three is a SLOP. I see that. Please approach the microphone. Seeing none, unless there's an objection, I close the public hearing. Does anyone have questions for any member of staff or the applicant? Seeing none, um, that is, concludes the public hearing on this item. We've done the consent item. Item number fourteen is next.
I, item number fourteen is a funding authorization for nature center echo classrooms storm improvements. Carl Thomas.
Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the following, um, item on the agenda is request for approval for a stormwater improvement project at the nature center. Um, this project's, gosh. Well, since I've been here since twenty eighteen, it's at least five years in the making. The project, um, started from when the detention facility, um, was installed at the nature center. Um, it's, it's a wet, uh, micro pool detention, extended detention pond that was installed to handle the additional runoff from the, um, nature center pavilion and the offsite. Roughly about twelve acres of runoff that drains through the, through, through the nature center and into that detention pond facility. The pond is functioning well, but the challenge that we had, probably the first big rain after the pond was installed, um, we had a huge blowout. Um, basically, the challenge that we're having is getting that water through that area, through the, walking through the pedestrian pathways, through the, what, the, the eco classroom wasn't even, uh, built at the time. But, I mean, like I said, even before there was any structures out there, we were having significant flooding issues. Um, just to give you an idea as to how much water that we're talking about. One through the one-hundred-year, um, flood event, um, pre-developed flows, roughly nine-point-four cubic feet per second, and a hundred years, sixty-three-point-two-four. That really doesn't resonate. What I typically like to do is convert that to pounds. So if you look at a cubic foot, you know, basically a cube, that's about sixty-two pounds of water. So you're talking about anywhere from almost six hundred to up to almost four thousand pounds of water that's flowing through that area per second. So when you have a big storm event, um, the Parks Department, Brent and I met with some of the, you know, nature center staff. And, you know, we, you know, worked, worked with some, you know, some jerrywigs and less expensive solutions to try to deal with it. But the problem we were having is we just couldn't control the water in the bigger storm events, and it was pushing all that debris through that forested area into the detention facility. So, um, we reached out to the, um, engineers with Dewberry, and they collaborated with the, um, engineers who worked on the revisions to the master plan that included that stormwater improvement, um, at the eco classroom area. And they worked on a tiered weir, weir wall system to basically check that water, take all of that energy out, and start off with a four-bay system upstream to capture any debris that washes through that forested area and connect all of that drainage that was going through that pedestrian, you know, walkway area with the pipe system, about roughly two hundred um, feet to basically treat that, you know, let it flow through the system and, um, reduce some of that flooding and, um, erosion ish, issues that we were having. In terms of cost, um, there's a lot of options that we could do that would be cheaper. But, um, working with, um, the pond, um, engineering staff and the Dewberry engineering staff wanted to try to match the existing aesthetics. So the, those three weir walls that we're proposing would, you know, basically be, precast in place, um, walls with the veneer, um, concrete on the outside that matches the existing weir wall that's already out there. So, I mean, that is, um, you know, you know, definitely added, you know, a significant amount. The other, the other challenge that we're having is just, I mean, the, the, the cost of construction materials in metro Atlanta is just, I, I'm used to it by now, but I, I was, I was hoping that there'd be some questions about it, because this is the first time since I've, you know, RS means basically calculates the cost of construction materials throughout the country, and this is the first time the national average is below metro Atlanta cost for construction materials. So, um, like I said, we can go with the cheapest solution, but it would not match the existing aesthetics that are out there in the park. Um, the proposed cost, and I, I made sure that the contractor, because we ran into some, some significant issues, um, with the, with the subgrade when we installed that weir wall, um, out there in the pond. So there's some significant contingencies in this, another thing that's pushing up the cost. But the proposed amount is roughly seven hundred and ninety thousand, and I added a five percent contingency to take it to eight thirty. So, um, I'm opening up to any questions that council may have.
Questions, go, John.
Yeah, thank you, Carl. Um, yeah, a lot of money. Um, I'm sure it's needed. Um, but when I'm looking at the various aspects, you're a stormwater guy, putting in stormwater flumes and stuff and getting the water running, right? But I'm also reading a preferred concept, and is that your language, sir? Is that, that's, as, it sounds like we're also putting in, uh, hexagonal decks and doing other additions. Is this part of the project as well? Is it a stormwater or is it a construction park project?
The hexagonal decks is not included in this. That will be paid for from the nature center's budget.
Okay.
That deck system, with the exception of the concrete footings for the deck.
All right.
The cost of the deck system is not included in this project. It won't be funded.
Again, I'm hearing about a pollinator garden, a whole bunch of other stuff in the documentation that you attached, so I'm trying to understand what we're paying for eight hundred thousand dollars for. Is it for the stormwater or is it a park improvement? I'm just trying to get it from that perspective.
It's, it's just for the storm improvements.
Okay.
Just for the storm.
Then you've answered my question. Again, I, I see the diagram, um, from Dewberry. I'm sure that there's a, uh, RFP, all the documentations on the web and can be attached, and it's out there. I just haven't seen it. I'm sure it's all for the stormwater.
Uh, Dew, Dewberry is one of our own call.
Okay.
Design firm, so they were able to.
So this is an all-in-house contract.
Engineer study, yes.
All right. Is it, I'm sure there's other documentation besides this one plan, though. I mean, I'm guessing.
Oh, you, you're talking about the full engineering.
Yes, there you go.
Yes, 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 there is. I, I can forward, I can forward that to, to you and the rest of the council.
Um, if we could make that part of the packet, I think it would be worthwhile. We're talking eight hundred thousand dollars for a stormwater project in a, in a public park. I'd love to have that documentation saved forever for anybody to get access to it. And after that's all any questions I have. Thank you so much.
That's Catherine.
Hi, your plunge pool system, it sure looks like standing water, but I'm assuming this is pass-through water, and it wouldn't be standing water like a pool? Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the goal is, the, the only permanent pool that we have is, is the micro pool in the actual detention pond. Those other upstream plunge pool systems, they may have some standing water in it immediately after the storm, but the goal is for those areas to drink that.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you. So, oh, this is really for Eric. Well, first of all, a question for whoever. This money, is it coming from ARP funds for stormwater?
No, this is from the stormwater utility.
Okay. Is there a reason? I mean, I mean, we have all that federal money that has a deadline. I realize it's like probably six of one and half dozen of another, but, or have you allocated all the federal money? And you're confident you're going to spend it by the time.
I mean, I mean, you know, I, I could, you know, put it on the agenda again and, and switch it over to ARPA, but we haven't, you know.
I think so. I think so. I think so. I realize, I think so. It, for me, I don't know how anybody else feels, but, but.
Yeah, that's a good way to do it, Mayor. I mean, provide, Ken or Jay, you don't see anything, any issues with that?
He wouldn't need any additional thing.
Right.
Right, so do we even need to, we just need to put it in the.
Put that footnote.
Put in the footnote, amend it to say that the funds will come from.
Yeah, the motion, a motion to approve could say, continue upon coming out of that.
They are, yeah, yes. And then in the future.
Do we still, do I still need to include the engineering study?
Yes, the engineering study is regardless. But in the future, I think it's important, um, that we, this is about branding, Eric. I don't really know how to do it, but it's to the nature center. When we call it the nature center, it feels like a very private institution, but this is a public park. And I think the park has a name, maybe, Dunwoody Park. That's what I thought. So in the future, and maybe when you've updated the agenda item, that you can put Dunwood Nature Center at Dunwoody Park or Dunwoody Parks Nature Center, or just Dunwoody Parks Storm Improvements, because at the end of the day, it's a city park, and this feels like we're doing an improvement for a private entity, which we're cre- we're correcting of existing drainage problem in a city park.
Yeah, I would definitely not have it on the agenda.
Okay, right, right, exactly. So just wanted to clarify that. All right, anybody else? So we need a motion. Uh, John, why don't you make the motion if that's okay, because you know the language we're going to use, maybe.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve number 14 funding authorization for Dunwoody Nature Center, Dunwoody Nature Center Echo Classroom Stormwater Improvements with the funding being allocated from the ARP fund.
Second. All right, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, that was good, John.
Do I wait for Sharon to read or? You can recuse. Okay, I, I will be recusing myself from this item.
Okay. That was easy. The next item under the agenda under business items is an ordinance to amend the city of Dunwoody zoning map presenting conditions of lot parcel 1836901002 in consideration of special land use permit case SLWP 23-02 for 5342 Tilly Mill Road.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Just to give you a quick update on this request. On my slide, I do have a little typo. It's slip 23-02, so my apologies on that. But for 5342 Tilly Mill Road, actually two typos, that's embarrassing. But this is for the Marcus Jewish Community Center of Atlanta. They're requesting a special land use permit to allow all of their existing improvements to ruminate plus the construction of new sport courts, which consists of 12 pickleball courts and one multipurpose court. We discussed this at the last meeting. Overall, these improvements are being installed in the southeast corner of the property. There was quite a bit of discussion at the last meeting that centered around the noise abatement or the noise attenuation. And so we have spoken with the applicant. These were the previous conditions and I've highlighted the condition in question, which essentially at the previous meeting just required the installation of the materials, but did not provide for any future testing and also did not have any stipulations for maximum sound levels coming from the pickleball courts. And so in conjunction with the applicant, we have developed a new condition. It is a little bit longer and a little bit more complicated. So I'm going to break it down for you here. The first part essentially remains the same, but then there are three new sections that I've pulled out and I've highlighted them in different colors. So the section in blue is establishing a standard of noise measurement. So the noise study that they provided, which is exhibit D, established a baseline noise level, ambient noise level. And that baseline measurement was established at the Dunwoody Glen property line, which are the closest neighbors and are the ones who would be affected, most affected by this improvement. And so it established the baseline ambient noise measurement there and it the way this condition is written is that the noise from the new court shall not increase more than three DBA above that baseline measurement. And that's considered a sort of standard practice in terms of noises that would be sort of barely perceptible change. And then in purple is the next section of our condition, and that's establishing a timeline for measuring the noise in order to ensure the effectiveness of the noise attenuation materials. And as discussed at the last meeting, what the applicant is considering for noise attenuation is that fiberglass fencing essentially to absorb noise. And so six months after it's constructed, we would require them to go out utilizing the same methodology, go out and measure the noise to ensure it's not going over three DBA. And then requiring them to go out after 12 months again, because we want to capture this site at different times of year, because sound travels differently depending on whether or not the trees have leaves and things like that. And so we're requiring two measurements and if either of those measurements are going above that three DBA limit, they'll be required to alter their sound attenuation to get them within that three DBA threshold. And then the last part in green establishes a procedure in the event of future noise complaints that essentially establishes that, you know, if somebody believes that the noise limit is being violated, they would go out there and measure again according to these established standards. So if you guys have any questions about this added condition, I would be happy to answer them.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, this is an action item.
Move to approve.
Move by John.
Second.
Second by Rob. Any further discussions or questions? Thank you, Kathy, for and the JCC for being responsive. No other questions or comments? I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes six to zero. Okay. When Sharon's ready to read. The next item is an ordinance to amend chapter 27 zoning ordinance of the city of Dunwoody code of ordinances to regulate parking for home occupations. Madeline Smith.
Good evening again. So the text amendment that's under consideration is for section 27-168 parking regulations for home occupations. And based on feedback from the last mayor city council meeting, which was very helpful, we decided to revisit this text amendment and we've alternate significantly based on that feedback, not in terms of our goal, but in terms of the way it's written, we think the way it's written now better achieves, you know, the original scope and intent of this specific text amendment. So just to refresh everyone's memory, this text amendment is aimed at preventing people with home occupations from utilizing residential parking areas for fleet vehicle parking and management. This has been an issue that's come up with code enforcement a couple of times where people are using their residential property and their home occupation to have people park their work trucks and vehicles there overnight and it's normally multiple, multiple cars, you know, filling up driveways and spilling out onto the streets and and having employees or contractors come there, pick them up and then take them and then bring them back. And so that's sort of the specific issue we're trying to address here while also still acknowledging that as, you know, a person with a home occupation, you might have your own personal work vehicle and we want to respect that and ensure that you can, you know, maintain your business in that way and ensuring that you're, but ensuring that you're operating your business in a way that fits in with the residential character. So overall, the way it's written now is that we do allow you to have your pickup truck or your work van, but commercial vehicles are prohibited. And the way we, excuse me, the way we define commercial vehicles is the same way we define commercial vehicles in our parking code, which is in section 27-206. So essentially there is a state of Georgia code that we utilize to define commercial vehicles. So we're keeping that consistent throughout our code. Previously, we had another method for determining what was a commercial vehicle. But again, based on feedback, we've amended that. And again, we are keeping it consistent with the way the rest of our code considers commercial vehicles. So overall, we're disallowing fleet vehicle parking, but still allowing people to have their work trucks. And if you guys have any questions about this text amendment, I would be happy to answer them.
Okay, does anybody have questions, comments tonight? John, go ahead.
Thank you, Madeline, for the changes. You're spot on as a former federal motor carrier safety inspector for doing trucking enforcement. Spot on. So you're following federal rules, you're following state laws and you've put it into state to try to fix the problems that we're having to where commercial vehicles, commercial vehicles are not allowed, but your home occupation or your home vehicles are still going to be allowed. You're not hurting the small mom and pop painter who works out out of his truck. That'll be fine. It's not a big vehicle. This was, this fixes that issue and treats those residents fairly. So thank you. I'm in favor and move to approve unless I'll go there.
Or you can, if there's a motion, so now somebody needs a second.
I'll second.
Right now, there's further questions and discussion. Go ahead, Stacy.
I just, I'm always cognizant of when we put in something that and how are we going to enforce it? So the vehicles parked on site may only be driven by an occupant of the dwelling. Like, I get that. How do we enforce that?
So our code enforcement department, they have the tools and mechanisms to investigate that. I'm not a code enforcement professional, so I don't, you know, necessarily exactly know what their tools are, but they do employ sort of investigative techniques whenever there are code enforcement complaints.
John.
Just for background of commercial vehicle in commercial enterprises of a certain size over 10,000 pounds has to have a USDOT number on the side of the truck, which is gives you, you can quickly search a federal database and it shows you where the home where it's low, where it's headquartered out of and where it's operating from. So there's, there's enforcement means readily available to track that vehicle who operates it and where it's headquartered. So it's easy to do for commercial vehicles under this rating, under the guise in which they've set.
So one of the problems I think we're trying to solve here is locations potentially where there's lots of trucks and they're sticking out of the driveway. I think that's fair to say. Chief, is it, are there rules about encroaching on the road from a driveway?
I don't know the code section off the top of my head, but I do believe if your vehicle's sticking out blocking traffic, it could be considered obstruction.
Okay.
Blocking the roadway.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any other questions? We have a motion on the floor. Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. All right. Thank you. No, I didn't ask. Anybody opposed? I thought that was unanimous. Sorry. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend chapter 27 zoning ordinance of the city of Dunwoody code of ordinances to amend regulations for nonconforming uses. Madeline Smith.
Good evening, one last time. So to review this text amendment, it's for section 27-554 regarding our nonconforming use regulations. We haven't altered the text since the last meeting, but this wasn't placed on consent, so I'm just going to sort of review and reiterate the scope of this amendment. So essentially we are changing or requesting to change when a nonconforming use is considered abandoned. So our current regulations already state that a use is considered abandoned when the use is discontinued or ceases for a continuous period of six months or more. And that requirement is sort of consistent with other cities and the way nonconforming uses are treated in a lot of jurisdictions in this area. However, the way our code currently difference different differentiates itself is that it provides a really overly broad list of exemptions that allow nonconforming uses to continue indefinitely. And that's not really the intent of the nonconforming use regulations. It is, you know, intended to, you know, obviously protect people's property rights. But it also intends to allow us to start implementing our codes and regulations, again, the comprehensive plan, and then we use our zoning ordinance to enforce and, or excuse me, incorporate those suggestions from the comprehensive plan. So the proposed code doesn't change the time period for when it's discontinued. It just removes those overly broad exemptions. For example, those exemptions said, you know, as long as you're just marketing it for that nonconforming use, then you can keep it indefinitely. It doesn't provide any sort of time limit on that. So, you know, essentially it makes it very difficult for us to ever start phasing out, you know, what uses are deemed undesirable. So overall, the amendments are, or excuse me, the texts remaining relatively similar, but we are removing those exemptions and we are also stipulating that a nonconforming use is presumed abandoned if the owner or operator fails to maintain their proper licensing, like so their business license essentially. So if you guys have any questions about this amendment, I would be happy to address them.
Any questions? I see none. It's an action item.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Stacy, second by Tom. Any further questions or discussion? There you go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is part naming campaign for the Roberts Drive Park property. Brent Walker.
Evening, Mayor and Council. As we discussed at the, can't remember which day it was now. It's in the memo. We named Homecoming Park, the Bermack Park property. At that time, council asked that we return with some additional names for the Roberts Drive property. We collected names from staff and some residents around the area and councilwoman Lawburger took those names and then shortened the list down to what is in your packet tonight. There are eight names that are being submitted for consideration. I did another mentimeter for all of us to score them out, rank them this evening. So hopefully you have your, hopefully you have your phones with you. So allow y'all let me know when you have your phones ready for the next slot and we'll.
Point of information, though, if I could. So we're going to start with just these eight names that there were comments from the public that we received today. I wanted to make sure that you were aware that I forwarded you an email with some additional names. I just want to make sure that that was part of the discussion prior to making a final decision and then you know, what are the will of council? If there's any other names, I just want to make sure that that's part of the discussion prior to moving forward.
Catherine.
We, I reviewed those names and most of them weren't name names. So the other one, High Tower is referencing a road that's in another city.
Okay.
So based on what we talked about, the two other times we voted, this list is reflective of no names, including no pet names and distinctive features and local lure. Thus, those did not fit what we were seeking.
I appreciate that. There's one final one that was given to me just the other day, just for consideration. I'll throw it out there. Promenade Park. So we have Homecoming and Prom Park would be the other option. Promenade, which means a place for strolling. I thought had merit. So Promenade Park, we have Homecoming Park. Why not have Prom Park too? Promenade, a place for strolling.
But Homecoming is supposed to be about the dances. It is supposed to be about the homestead. I think we have to disassociate it with the dance.
Just making the comment, I'm just forwarding a comment that was given to me by a citizen for discussion purposes only. I'm happy to move forward with the, with the will of council for this vote. If that's the, so be it. I just want to make sure that I'm voicing what people have given me previously. So I'm putting that up.
Sharon. That's any, it's fine.
Yeah, six. I can need one more.
Me, I haven't done it yet. What do you, okay, hit the heart. It didn't come, oh, it's.
All right, everybody ready?
No, because I don't, oh, never. No, because I don't, oh, never mind. I'm ready now. Sorry. Right. That's probably possible. How does this, where do you see numbers? Oh, nine.
Screen up there.
I see it. How did you do that? Oh. Are these the results? I think we've all. I voted, I didn't vote for eight, but, uh, because, because I did something wrong, but I voted for four.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we're going to discuss the top two.
Top two. So the top two are Village Crossing Park and Wildcat Park. And as y'all can see in your memo, the Village Crossing is for the uh, tying the village area to the railroad stop and linking of our village of neighborhoods and Wildcat Park is named after the creek behind the nature center and that property is Wildcat Creek. So.
But does the creek touch the park?
It does not touch that property, but it is in the area of the, yeah, it is the water. It is the creek directly. So with that.
Supposed to leave a discussion. Who would like to speak on one of these two names or both of these two's names? Go ahead, Rob.
I have opinions. Um, I think Village Crossing sounds like a shopping center. So if we have to pick between these two, I would say Wildcat.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. I have a question. So who else said they thought Village Crossing should sounded like a shopping center? Did you say that, John? Was it your first choice? Was it your first choice?
No.
I think there's something wrong with your app because how did that end up first? I didn't, did any, let me start this way because we don't keep secrets. It's all open. Did anyone vote for Village Crossing as their first name? So there is something wrong with the app. A voting scandal.
I don't know if it's the app.
I did rank them. I did rank them.
Your first choice.
I did. Right. Who ranked Wildcat first?
Now I don't remember. It's, I was top two on those. So.
Right. No, I didn't. I ran Juniper first, but, um, right. So I
Nobody voted for Village Crossing.
How did it end up first?
It might have gotten the most second choice.
I don't think so. I don't think it was the second choice.
Okay.
Did anybody, okay.
So there may be enough dissension to Village Crossing Park. And the mayor brought up a point that if there is in fact a park one day in the village, we wouldn't want to confuse it. Right. So let's take it off the table.
Let's go to the next two.
So. Okay. Yeah. So or Promenade. So to me, Promenade and Wildcat kind of had the same problem, right? Because we named Homecoming Park, not associated with the high school. Although I know some people suggested it because of high school, but it's because the, one of the first homesteads in Dunwoody was on that property. What, and it's a good place for a walk. So to me, I don't know. I don't, I wish we could call it Wildcat Creek Park, but we can't call it that because there's no creek on the property at all, right? There's no, there's no water bottle.
I think then everybody will show up and looking for.
They'll be looking, they'll bring their kids in the bathing suits, looking for.
Or we can have a sign and a nice connector to the Dunwoody Nature Center.
Wildcat Creek watershed park.
Wildcrack Creek. Wildcat Creek, Wildcat Creek. There is a splash park there.
This is telling me that none of us feel really strong.
About any.
Uh, uh, any of these. That's what this discussion is telling me.
I like.
What do you like, Lynn?
Well, I don't, I don't, I like Roberts Road. Um, I know no one else does, but I don't. I, to me, Wildcat feels like an intent unintentionally, we are tying it to the high school.
I don't think we're physically located close enough to make that.
Well, a lot of connection.
Wildcat Creek is there and Wildcat is just a, it's a, it's a nod to the.
There'll be a connotation.
And I mean, even if there is an association, is that a problem? I mean, it's, it is our community high school. If it's associated with the school mascot, I don't necessarily see that as an issue. Even if that's not the association we're going for, if people make it, I don't see that as a detriment personally.
I like Juniper because it's nature-y.
Are there any juniper trees on the park?
That I hope that someone had investigated. Are there any?
Well, the issue is more, can one grow there? And one can grow there. So whether there is or not, we would plant one.
Right. We could plant a few.
To make it work.
Oh my gosh. This is why parks have geographic names.
Well, and it's unfortunate that Roberts is a person.
Right. It's also the name of the street. Um, okay, y'all figure it out. I'm at.
I'm at Holly Bank.
Oh, oh, I like that.
One point I think of that though, is the Holly Bank Circle residents are very concerned about parking in their neighborhood.
Okay.
And people coming in there. So if you call it Holly Bank Park.
They'll drive down that road. Okay.
It's putting us in the Vermac area of confusion.
Okay. Yeah. Go ahead. Holly Glen?
No.
Right. My gosh, I moved to name this park Wildcat Park. All right, we have a motion.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor of naming the park, Austin Park, say aye. Actually, that was, sorry, all in fa, that was totally accidental. All, it's because Joe said that. We've already had, we've already had one voting scandal, right? Something got Village Crossing first. Um, okay. All in favor of naming the park Wildcat Park indicate by raising your hands. All right. All right, all opposed. Me. All right, that passes six to one.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will.
Who seconded this? Who's, Tom seconded, sorry.
I will investigate as to why the mentimeter did what it did.
Okay.
I think that's ranking. So it's taking, it's, it's waiting everybody's.
I didn't even rank it though, because I didn't get to all eight. Something, something went wrong. Okay. We know it's, we know it's not a reliable system.
Thank you all.
Okay. All right. As Ginger comes up, I should tell y'all, I suggested to Michael Sterling that he go home. Because he did. So we are, we will, we, so I, in looking at previous last year at this time, we had a special called meeting for Edge City and we might just do the same thing again. Go ahead. Share them whenever you're ready.
The next item is authorization to enter into agreement with Central Square for community development application. Ginger Lapage.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to request consideration of an expedited approval process today to enter into an agreement with Central Square. Um, it's for the first year, not to exceed 248,0653. Um, this would be the application that handles code enforcement, business license permits, planning and zoning applications and special events permits. We are already using Central Square for our public safety application. That's what the PD uses for their MCT and RMS. Um, if we approve this by June 30th, the cost is that, uh, 162, 154 for the one-time fee. And if we approve it after June 30th, it goes up to 216, 205. The recurring fee is the same. It's going to end up being the same as what we're already paying because this will replace I work and the business license module of Tyler.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any questions, Joe?
Oh, this, this is a, this is a scope of their consulting services to do the, uh, migration. They're going to migrate the data configuration, design.
Correct. That one-time fee includes the migration of the data and the configuration and it's regardless, if we were to sign, say today, it's still a year out before we would be able to actually move forward with getting live with the product.
And it is all cloud-based?
This is cloud-based, yes.
Good. And is it going to help anything for the greater at-large public if they want to log tickets or see things and so on?
Yes. So there is a module that the citizens will be able to follow the status of their tickets. It depends on the configuration as to the amount of visibility, but yes.
And is, so it would be, say, eventually it would merge the functionality from C Click Fix and I Works into.
So this would not be to replace the C Click Fix portion. This would be to replace I Work though.
Do they have the capability of taking the C Click Fix? Has that been a conversation to do that as well to get on the same platform?
That's not, no, we have not discussed, um, that because the Public Works Department is using C Click Fix for their portion right now.
But. But, so has there had, has there been conversations between the two departments about, does, does Central Square offer that fat of, um, functionality? That, that is using today, that Public Works, their SAP system? Do they offer similar features?
They, they do, but Public Works is actually using City Works for what they use. And there's not currently an integration between City Works and, um, Central Square.
So I would, I would say, all right, so I would love to see, well, let's go live with these guys with the, um, with the community of homicide. And as soon as you're alive and happy, have a conversation with Public Works and see what we can do to merge it on the same platform as well, because that would make sense. I, I, I'd like a single place where citizens can log both a code enforcement and a pothole. And it's like a citizen portal, right? You know, it would make cleaner, you know? And what's the timeline on the, on the implementation of this?
If we sign it today, we're a year out at least before we'd be able to, it's, it's nine months right now, just for them to begin the process. And then it's probably an additional three months or so before we'd be able to do our part.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. All right, thanks.
Anybody else? Go ahead, Rob.
Just, uh, you know, process questions. I read through, through this. It sounds like staff identified a preferred vendor, correct? What was the process to select this vendor? We identified needs and this was the vendor we felt best met the needs.
Yes, we started with a list of needs and requirements and we looked at 31 different applications. And we demoed five of those and this was the one that best fit the needs.
And so this is just to, now that we have identified our preferred, this is just to get us a little bit of a savings.
Correct. Yes.
John.
I don't like having a gun to our head in the sense of hurry up and approve this now. I don't like that at all. If a company's good and the technology's good and they're not going to be able to do it for nine months, why are they forcing us to approve today? I don't like that at all. Quick research, very quick. Um, I'm looking at websites that rate this company and their own employees are saying that they don't have enough staff. They can't do this. Their CEO is turning over their private, their previous company from somebody else. Just how much research have you done? And are you ready to stand behind this? Because again, what I'm seeing with two minutes of searching, I'm concerned that we are jumping in front of this to save a few dollars when in reality it's going to cost us a whole lot more down the road. If you need to do a special, when is the deadline to approve this?
June 30th. But we, we have been doing research on this for over a year now. We've been investigating other vendor options and other choices. And this was the one, um, we included the community development team. We did demos on them with the finance team, community development. We looked at several different options and this is the one that best fit the needs. And we have been using Central Square with the police department since.
Okay. And your customer service for online, for on-call aspects or problems that you've had good success with them?
It is the same or better than several of the other vendors that we're currently using for other things.
Okay.
And it's definitively better than what we were experiencing with I Work.
Now, Ginger, I trust you immensely. I, I, I'm ready to approve, but I also have grave concerns over quickness. I want to make sure you've done your due diligence. It sounds like you have. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
How about, you're already using Central Square. If, if we weren't, I would be asking, did you ask for references? So do we know of other cities that are using this for the functions that, do we, do we personally know of other cities that are happy using? Richard, you're nodding your head. Are they?
He, yeah, he had given us a list of them, but unfortunately that was a few months ago and I don't have the list in front of me right now.
But there are, you, you know, there's local cities and you know, they're happy using that.
Yes.
So I have a suggestion. We can vote to approve it with Eric um, and you and Richard sitting down and checking references one more time, because if, if we vote to approve it and you decide not to move forward, then that's okay. And so what we'll do is we'll include that in the motion that, you know, fi, uh, tenant, something with, I'll figure it out.
Yeah, I would use the purchase, the purchasing department because they, they always run our background.
Okay.
So, uh, based on a satisfactory, you know, um, we do credit, we do reports with them.
Right.
It's called a credit report, but we do, then, yes, sir. We will do those, that registry report.
Okay.
And then we can see, that gives y'all some satisfaction.
Right.
The one reason we brought it up tonight was because of the discount.
Mm-hmm.
And like I, I told, uh, the mayor and earlier, if y'all aren't, are not comfortable with it, you know, we're not overly worried about the discount, but we felt we needed to bring that to y'all to let you know the timeline on this. But if it doesn't meet the requirements, we certainly don't want to go with it and have a failed product. We, and so there's, they're very valid questions y'all have asked. I asked the same ones of the IT, you know, before we got here tonight, but I wanted y'all to have the full package. Thank you.
To delay if, or we can put our confidence in, um, our purchasing department with Eric overseeing it. So add that. So somebody, so it's a motion. We need a motion.
Do we have recommended language for this motion?
With.
I think what I hear and unfortunate is I've lost my sheet. 19, uh, authorization entering into agreement with Central Square for community development applications subject to final review by the city manager with the purchasing department.
Yes. Perfect. Okay. Move by John. Second by Rob. Did you get that, Sharon, the motion? Okay. Um, any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you.
As Jay comes up, this, this item also is an item, and Jason will go through it, that, um, that has, is being put on for business based on a timing constraint as well. And like I said before, based on the way we do our agendas now with discussion items, if there's something the council is not comfortable with, please, you know, let us know and ask, but the staff is prepared to answer those questions. Mr. Venicki.
Uh, Mayor and Council, the item before you today basically expands and adds a position of deputy public works director. Um, under your guy's headcount, it's there in the, the backup documents for it. Uh, to give some context on this, um, after Ishri left, who was a contractor with our municipal vendor Lo, we've discovered it's been a very trying time. It's been about three and a half months of filling that position through the contracted vendor. We are starting to discover this with some of our municipal vendors, especially at the higher level positions lately. Um, slowly over about the past two years, we've added deputies in every department, say Parks and Public Works. And part of it is at that level, there seems to be a sweet spot of the private contractor might have a higher salary, worse benefits. People want stability with the city employment because they also know, should the municipal vendor not re, renew the contract in two years, they're out of a job. So we started working together, both, uh, Michael, HR Department and myself and Eric, trying to talk through alternatives as we've been interviewing candidates. And one of the candidates that wouldn't, will not accept the position as a contracted person came also apart, something that got us to chew on an idea for this. And part of it would be to turn, or actually we're adding a city position that's deputy public works director, because right now Michael's department, when you add all budgets together, is the largest department between Stormwater Sfloss and Public Works General Fund. The lion's share of funding is there. We are at the point bandwidth wise of needing more managerial capacity. Ishri in some ways acted as a deputy public works director, but we need one in that way. We do have an identified candidate we've talked to that would be willing to do it if it was a city positions. They've also kind of in today's world of being flexible and changing things in the way things operate. They're actually interested in it as, as, as a not 40-hour a week position, 30. Now, we discussed it internally and even though we would all prefer 40, with this individual skill. Now, we discussed it internally and even though we would all prefer forty, with this individual skill set and where they are. The best fit would be to have that so that Michael has a person as a backup that's of, of a department head level direction. And take the former Ishri position and essentially turn it into a project manager on this, so it does expand the capacity of the department. And given with even, if the bond passes in the fall, we'll be looking at adding managerial support on all the projects with that. But even without it, we're to the point, uh, just basically capacity wise on running projects. We need some more higher level management and oversight on this, and I'll let Michael add things to it.
Yes, as Jay said, um, kind of capacity wise and just having some, some backup in the department. There's actually a, a really practical. Reason for having another city employee in the department, we ran into, we, we, every three years, we have to go. For local administered project certification with GDOT to be able to manage the, the federal funds. And each time they've gotten a little stricter about. Who can do that, what their qualifications are, and the last time, the last go around, they were. We had to basically get an exception because they were insistent that there'd be two city employees that are certified. For this, to manage those funds, for the very reason that. The city's been moving towards um, having deputies in all the departments anyway is that, you know, if something happens to one, you've got a backup that. That can step in and, and take over, so. Now that's a very practical reason, but in general. You know, just for long-term planning and thinking about the department and where it's going. Uh, having another city employee that can be, can step in when needed would be very helpful.
Okay, does anybody, first of all, is there a desire to delay this? Okay, John, go ahead with your question.
I have a couple of questions, first Jay, can you talk about the pay aspect and how does it relate?
Uh, yeah, currently what we're looking at is probably a prorated down to thirty hours. Uh, with the position being a hundred and thirty-five thousand for a full year. Tacked on with that, our healthcare costs and our pension benefits to it. The pension would be prorated down based upon the hours worked, so they wouldn't get a full four-year, hour-week pension off of it. While we expect it would be in July, about ninety-five thousand dollars of ongoing costs this year. Uh, between the mileage rate, the underestimation of the tax digest, the underestimation of. The hotel motel, even combined with what pay raises were in there, this could be absorbed within that. Uh, the other thing we're looking at, and this is one where we don't have this part of the structure nailed down at this point. Uh, with. Public Works, there are three pots that they can charge things to as applicable, general fund, stormwater and or splosh. More than likely, we'll be able to move some of the cost of splosh and. Or excuse me, the contracted position of splosh and stormwater partially to that, to absorb some of the cost out of the general fund. So it'd be partially absorbed, this position would be absorbed by the general fund currently. And we expect this individual to be handling more general fund projects than anything else.
Is this a new position or is this a replacement for current staff?
This, this, this is in all essence, a new position.
So this is all new, so in other words, it's not a replacement for several contracted staff that, okay, I'm just trying to understand the aspect. Is this a professional engineer, Michael, is that?
Yes, that's, uh, the candidate we have identified is, is a professional engineer. Uh, with a good bit of experience. Uh, just, I wanted to mention on the timing, you know, we, the deputy director, as I mentioned. The city's been moving in that direction and we've been discussing it for a while. But, you know, we weren't really planning to do anything maybe until a budget cycle or maybe when the current contracts end. But with Ishri's position becoming open and us trying to fill that, it's, this, that's why we're bringing this now because we have. Have struggled to find the right fit there and we've found candidates really for both positions now that we think would work and that's why we're bringing it now.
Alright, so you have a candidate that's already sort of, you're looking at, and I guess this candidate. Is, will fit in well with the city of Dunwoody, have they worked here previously?
They have not worked here previously.
Okay, you're narrowing it for me.
I don't. I don't wanna say too much cuz.
That's, I, I don't need you to.
But they, they've worked in some other places that I think are, have some similarities to Dunwoody.
Alright, sir, thank you so much, you've answered my questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
So um, just, let's go back with the, the, the line item funding budget. So Ishri was contracted through Lowe's, right?
Correct.
And um, let's talk about what was that? Range, we're paying for services, not people, right, for Lowe's, so what are we, are we going to be um, changing that, so? We're still asking Lowe's to do what, you said you want more of a PM. So let's, are we gonna still keep that or are you just kinda?
Here, here's the best way to do it, in all essence, this does add a position, adds a city, city employee person that annually would be one ninety a year. The current position within the contract that Ishri occupied, we will refill, it'll be slightly tweaked. However, to let everyone know, even though there is a contract, it has a total not to exceed amount. So vendors pay their employees higher and lower and then we settle out the entire part. We actually think that the cost of changing the Ishri part may actually be a zero-sum game on that. So the increase to the city budget would be a hundred and ninety thousand for this. And Ishri's position would now be operating a little bit different from the way it's currently written in the contract.
So the, the, you just said one ninety K, that's including the pension benefits, et cetera, that's at the thirty hours?
That is correct, and for us right now, that works. We're, we're gonna budget it at the full amount.
Of forty, budget, budget for full-time for forty hours?
Excuse me, hold one, but let me ask, Richard was, I can't remember, did it be the one ninety with the one thirty or the one hundred?
I'd, I'd like to hope to think that eventually.
Well, okay, yeah, it's, it's budgeting at the one thirty, which was the full.
Oh, that is the full annual, so.
We expect to pay less than that when all is said and done.
And, and long-term, in just reading this position description, I appreciate for being provided that. We wanna aspire for a full-time person?
At some point, yes, and, and there could be talks later on with either this person down the road or another, another person after this one. Yes, at some point, we will need that to be full-time. However, right now, the city can make it work and we're to need to be more nimble in our hiring practices.
And then last question, just kinda dumb it down, I, I was thinking this was gonna be an issue of replacement, but um, this is really. More of a managerial, you're saying, Ishri was doing some of these things. Um, it's really solidifying, can you just kinda clarify that a little bit more, Michael? That what, what Ishri had informally been doing versus what he's supposed to do Lowe's and what was really unmet need?
Yeah, so one, the two positions that we're proposing or the one additional position would be. More of a operational position, um, as far as managing the department, managing different aspects of the department, supporting me. And then uh, the role that Ishri was in, which was a capital project manager position. Would, that would still be that role, was to manage capital projects. Now, and I'll add to that, in the, in the short term. These, both of these people are probably gonna be doing a little bit of both, but the, in the long term is to. You know, kinda distinguish those two.
Just anecdotally, I've heard one of our neighboring cities that brought all their cities employees, uh, people in from contractors. And I've heard from third-party people saying, uh, it's worked out really well, I've, I've heard people that.
Heard the opposite, so there, I mean, I have.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Um, alright, um. Anybody else have questions or comments? So, when everybody's on board it, I presume that we're gonna see. Maybe Eric, our goal is faster customer service, maybe potential, I mean, I don't. I'm a big believer in measuring. To see if, what metrics we're looking for, I mean, I know we have a lot of work in this department.
Here's, here's the great thing about going through it with that type.
Yeah.
Part of the thing that isn't seen that much by council is the fact of internal workings and just like, for instance. Michael and I being able to sit down and talk about a property at some point, there needs to be a, a second person that can make those same level decisions. And that's an important thing that we are lacking right now in the public works department.
That's fine, just was asking, okay. Alright, any further discussions or questions, this is an action item.
Move to approve.
Move by Joe.
Second.
Second by Tom, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, yes, we look forward to you getting everyone on board.
Yes, me too.
Yes, yes, I know you really do. Alright, so council, we have removed number twenty-two from the agenda tonight, just so you know.
I'm next, Ray.
Oh yeah, you are next, I'm sorry, and actually, nobody, I just, this is concept design for Peeler Road path between Winter's Chapel and Windwood Hollow, Michael Smith.
Okay, so tonight, we're presenting the, the concept for the first phase of the path on Peeler Road. We actually started working on this project last year, but then put it on hold for the last nine months while the path plan was developed to see. See where that ended up. And just a little bit of history on the project, the, the city has always envisioned a trail between Brook Run. And Windwood Hollow going back to the original transportation plan. And the original parks plan, which were adopted about twelve years ago. And then in twenty seventeen, the transportation plan update. Added a recommendation to extend the path to Winter's Chapel because at that time. There had been a, a path proposed on Winter's Chapel as part of that corridor study. Um, so, and then most recently in the trail and the trail master plan. Um, the project we're talking about tonight is referred to as a programmed project P sixteen because the city had already allocated funding to it. And then the, the other piece of peeler, which we'll call phase two is um. E four on the map. Just a, a little more history, so I'll go ahead and address the, the north side versus south side. Um, conversation, um. The, the path has been presented on the north side, both when we did the public input last year. Uh, when we met with the neighborhood. And we met with adjoining property owners and it's shown on the north or it's recommended on the north side in the final master plan. There was a time while the plant, path plan was being developed. Where path was looking at, they were looking at the whole corridor at a high level and they suggested the south side of the road because they're. You know, for continuity more than anything because west of Lakeside Drive. You are, it has to be on the south side because there, when you get west of the, of the park out there, there's so many residential driveways that. You really, it's really not feasible to put it on the north side, but. But it's a high-level plan and as we got close to the final draft of the plan, I went out there and looked at it again. And I'll show this later in the presentation, but there's places. Between Windwood Hollow and Winter's Chapel where if you put it on the reservoir side, there's, there's only seventeen, maybe to nineteen feet of. Space between the curb and the wall for the reservoir, so. It's, it's really tight to try to fit the recommended buffer. And path in there, and in fact, part of path's recommendation was moving the road um. To, to make more space there, so, so which adds cost and just, so I'll, I'll show that later, but that's. That's how we got to path on the north side. Similar to what we've recommended on other projects, we, the north side is where most of the residences are. So if somebody's, you know, coming out of one of these neighborhoods and trying to get to the park or trying to get to Winter's Chapel Road. They can get on this path without having to cross peeler and then cross back, you know, like if they're going to the park. So just looking at, starting at Windwood Hollow Park on the, the left here, uh, coming out of the park. Um, you've, that area, that section of peeler has a pretty wide, flat shoulder. You know, zooming in a little bit, this, I'm showing some existing conditions out there today. You can see the, the north side has, at the park, near the park, it's pretty open and flat there. And then moving further down to, close to the Four Oaks subdivision entrance. Uh, there's a decelerate or acceleration lane there that we're proposing to remove, it really doesn't serve much purpose. Um, and then. The uh, the path would be, you know, have the buffer with the road. Here you can see, wanna, a little bit of what I'm talking about on the right side, the south side of the road. If you were to put the path in there on this segment on the south side. You would pretty much have to clear everything between the curb and the wall. And then your path is gonna be, if you don't move the curb as was originally recommended, then your path's gonna be right up against that wall for the reservoir. And there's probably places where you even have to. Because of the slope of the ground, maybe even have to add some wall there. Moving uh, down past Four Oaks. And I should comment here, both on the previous section. And the, all along Four Oaks, we're proposing that the path would be contained within the existing right-of-way. We wouldn't need any right-of-way and we would locate it so that um. We wouldn't necessarily need any easements from adjoining property either. There's, we're showing. All along the backside of the right-of-way here because there's utility poles out there, but in the final plan. Um, you know, we're probably gonna pull this path off the right-of-way and closer to the road. To, and kinda meander around the poles to um, reduce some of the impacts. Uh, to the trees. And then as we, so this is. Going, this is between Four Oaks and Winter's Chapel, again, the, there's not a lot of room on the south side. Without clearing everything out there. And then as you get to Winter's Chapel. There are a couple of properties here near Glaze Drive that we would need easements. Uh, a little bit of right-of-way at the corner of Glaze Drive and then some easements. To uh, build the path in this section, and then it would tie in um. At Winter's Chapel, there's a short section of existing path in front of the gas station that this would tie into. And this is the view near Glaze Drive. Also, you know, the last thing about, you know, the south side, um. Part of, part of that, if it was gonna be on the south side, there's another wall pretty, there's a narrow sidewalk and wall. Near the uh, the little small shopping center there on the corner, and so that would all have to be reconfigured. And you'd have to do some things with the intersection to, to get the path all the way to the intersection there. And then the last thing I'll touch on is that we did. Gather public input about a year ago, a little over a year ago. Through our city, uh, the project page on the city website, we, we asked for comments, we got sixty-nine written comments. Majority favored the project, um. The, you know, it was almost two to one, the number of responses supporting the project versus opposed to it. Most of the comments um. In opposition to the project were about the need in general, that they cited the. The nice sidewalk on the south side of the road and, you know, why, why do we need to spend the money and add a, a path on the north side of the road? Um, and then other concerns were mainly about the trees and, and privacy along. The neighborhood there. So um, with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Okay, questions, Rob, do you have questions?
A couple, just to start with, um, one is just. You know, an estimate if it, if we put this on the north side, what kind of um, impacts there are to trees? In the buffer, I mean, do you have a sense for how much is gonna have to be cut versus how much can be avoided?
Well, there's. Yeah, I mean, a lot of the trees, by the time you put the path in and the slope. On that side, a, a, a lot of the trees, not all of them, but a lot of the trees on that side would have to be removed to, to get the path in. Uh, with, with the grading that you would need to, because as you, near the Four Oaks entrance. The, the ground really slopes off from the roadway. But, but we've had, we've been having conversations with some of the neighbors there and, you know, some of the things. Because privacy and screening is a concern, so. You know, one of the things we've talked about and it, it would, you know, add a little cost to the project, but. You know, when you go and build the path and then it, it slopes down into their yard, so you, it's hard to. To screen when it, the ground's sloping away from the path, but, and we've done this on at least one other project, if you push. If you build a wall, say at the right-of-way line and build it up. You know, it costs a little more money, but then you can put. A fence or trees on top of that wall and you really can, you know, screen people from being able to see down from the roadway when you do that.
So would the thought be then to have a? So would the thought be then to have a. Tree buffer, or a lot of those houses look like they had privacy fences, would privacy fence be constructed with trees in front of it? I mean, what would that built up? Buffer look like?
Yes, I mean, when we were, when we're done, we would look to plant trees wherever we could. And a lot of it depends on, you know. How close the we pull the path to the roadway, but again. In some places, even if we pull it close to the roadway, if the ground's sloping away. You know, unless you build that up, it may be a privacy fence may not really change. I mean, that's kind of how it is out there now. Yeah. But. So I mean, I think. Going, the next steps on this project would be to. Work on finalizing the design, and part of that would be to meet with each of these property owners and. Look at ways to address the concerns about screening.
So no one would lose a privacy fence that has it currently? Nobody's over the into the easement or right away?
If if they are, it's not my, I mean, it's a foot or two, I don't know, they may be right on the right away, I don't remember, but. There's nobody way into the right away.
I think it's very important with when you're considering something this size, that it's that it's shaded, so the screen on one side ideally is operating in shade for this. That path on the other side is really a lovely shaded path. And I think. That would be. Very important. For this. Are that, do you pay for the temporary construction easements?
Yes, usually we do.
Okay, so it's and it looks like the two driveways that are impacted are owned by the same. Person on this. Map you provided.
Yes.
But there are, is there a second house? I mean, I see a driveway.
Yes, there's two houses there on two different lots, but it's like they're owned by the same person, and then there is a driveway easement. On the the Glaze Drive side, too, for a third lot.
Okay, well, I appreciate it. Moving forward, you're going to talk to each of these. Owners, it does look like a big wide area that's there, but I I think shade's important. Thank you. John.
Based on what I'm hearing from residents and what I'm looking at when I read the master. Plan for paths, when I look at page sixty three of eighty eight of the path plan. It clearly identifies a path on the south side. With no development whatsoever on the north side, we have a photo that clearly shows what it's going to look like with no development on the north side, but yet. We approved that at basically the last meeting. And here we are already changing our mind when it comes to development of a path. I think we should be consistent. This is not consistent.
John, wait, what page are you on?
I'm reading the path plan, page sixty three of eighty eight.
Okay, so I'm on sixty four.
I'm reading the path plan, and it's.
Like the paint number and the orange number?
The PDF number.
Yeah, there's the text of the plan talks about the north side, but there's a graphic.
I will say, John, if you want to flip to page fifty two. Of the path plan we approved, it's E four Peeler Road Trail. And that. Absolutely puts it on the north side, because then it talks about doing an intersection. At Peeler Road and Lakeside Drive to get it to the south side. So if you go to page fifty two and fifty three with the text.
I'll take a look at that, but what I'm looking at is clear to me that we were intending on the south side. And Michael, you were talking about the south side within the graphics. What were you gonna say?
I I said, the text talks about the north side, but there is a graphic for Lakeside Drive that. That shows it on the south side, and that's a function of. The plan evolving during.
So, yeah, I'll agree.
You mentioned.
Might as well.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to say there is a contradiction. I actually brought that up when we had the discussion of the trial meeting and also sent that the path, the illustration. Was supposed to have been removed from the final document.
Okay.
Because the text was on the north side.
And then, when, Michael, you're talking about clearing the vegetation and everything on the south side all the way to the wall. When we look at the Four Oaks aspect, we basically have to clear everything to the property lines, right, in order to put this in? So you're talking clearing either one side or clearing the other?
Yeah, a lot of places we would clear. The whole shoulder on that side, but not not everywhere.
The real problem with this aspect is that the road sits way up here, and the property is way down here, the privacy fences. Would come up about halfway, and then the trees cover the rest. We take away the trees, the the residents have no privacy. It almost screams that we need to put in a retaining wall about halfway up to then have a space for the. Privacy wall to go up on top of. We are clearly going to clear cut. To allow people to look into the backyards with their swimming pools and decks and all the rest, where these residents were not intending to have that done. And based on the previous conversations and the feedback they were given the city. They thought that this was no longer a project to be funded. It was in, as far as they were concerned, the the path plan and the path recommendations were to have it on the south side. This is already, you know, very quickly after the last path discussion, the first path to come forward, and there's disagreements about what's in the pa- plan versus what's going to be engineered. So I I have concerns over the way this is moving forward, but I'm happy to look at page fifty two, was it?
Fifty two. E four.
Thank you, but those are my comments. I have grave concerns, and I feel for the residents there. Thank you.
Go ahead, Tom. You said you had comments.
Hey, Michael, what I what I would appreciate seeing presented to us is a, you know, basically a. Show a a decision matrix, so it's a decision brief. Comparing either side, it's developing, you know, the army called it course of action brief. Do we tag to the left or attack to the right? So if you showed us like a pro and con. Of of here's the south side, here's the north side, the evaluation criteria. You know, we we know, you know mentally in your head. And we know anecdotally and here and there, the evaluation criteria, I think it would be great, and it would be great for the public to show. What are the impacts on both sides? If we do it on one side or the other, the impact such as trees. Landscaping, right of way. Utilities, whether that's underground or the existing poles. Safety overall for the facility user and or traffic. Will there be additional, would there be impacts on traffic calming, stormwater? I mean, look what you did at Winter's Chapel on on, that was immense stormwater, right? And then, and then also moving existing roadway curb and gutter, right? And and then also looking at that landscape buffer between the street and trail, and what would be installed on either side? So I'd like to see that kind of in a in a side by side comparison, showing each of these things, it's a decision, it's a. You can rank them, we can rate them, and we can see them out there all together, so we can really analyze either side. Okay, so I'd like to have that presented. That's just one comment, and the other one is when we do go to the homeowners on the side, I believe there's about fourteen properties. So is it okay? So eleven, right, so what would be absolutely is it the inventory those eleven? And this is the next steps on that side, and and yeah, have those one on one conversations with them. And see what it looks like exactly on their side and what they say and what we think we could do for that, and what would the concept would be, this is pre-engineering, but. Anyway, so those are my comments. Thank you.
Tom.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. As you know. I've been. Highly involved with this project since it was first presented probably over a year ago. To the public, I've had meetings with the Four Oaks neighbors, I've had constant contact with the number of the homes. In particular, the eleven homes that back up to Peeler Road, those are obviously. The ones that'll feel the impact of this project more than anyone else, anyone that lives internally in the neighborhood really isn't. Going to have a a direct effect to their homes. And obviously, as Michael pointed out, this project was was put on hold until the Path Foundation. Completed the 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 trailway plan, and. That's done now, so that's that's why we're back here. What? What I'd like to point out is I've I've had conversations with a lot of the residents in there, the primary concern has been raised i- is the privacy factor. You know, right now, they do have a a pretty busy road going through their backyards as well, but they don't have. A a sidewalk with people walking on it with the, you know, cars going by at thirty five or often much faster in that area, miles per hour. Are going to get a peak quick glance where some the concern is people walking or going in a much slower, and we'll be able to kind of peer over. However, there are solutions, as Michael's pointed out, that we have talked, spoken to a number of those residents, not everybody. And they're based on preliminary conversations there, i- if we're able to. Construct them the way that we've spoken to them, they say they'd be satisfied with that, and in some cases, it actually provides them more privacy than they have today. I'm not saying that it's a perfect solution, I'm not, you know, the tree, the tree issue i- is very real, but it's the the primary concern, I mean, the primary factor there is because because of the slope. So it's it's kind of a trade off of. Do we build up that wall to give them the privacy, but in order to do that, the trees have to go? Well, then, if you leave the wall, then the privacy becomes a factor, so. So what I've I've spoken to Michael, there's a couple of requests I have on this project moving forward. He already talked about removing the acceleration lane, I'd also like to remove the decel lane. Into the property. That would. Possibly give us the opportunity to push that even further away from the property line. Maybe not on on that side, I believe the 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 slope is not as severe, so that might. Allow for. Less impact to the tree canopy there. And I'd also like to actually see, I know there's issues with road taper and and engineering that's well above my pay grade, but. Because this is a very long, flat and straight road, there is an issue with consistent speeding on this road. And if there is a way that we can, by doing that, kind of constrict the road a little and put in engineered. Ways of of traffic calming. That would be. Something I know the neighbors would fully embrace. There, and I and I'd like to think that that would be possible. In some way. And perhaps that's what we do, you know, and I don't know if that's with lane widths or or whatever it is, I believe the plan initially called for an elevated crosswalk at. At at Windwood Hollow, is that correct?
I'm showing here, so what this plan shows is a refuge island, you know, but we have talked about a raised intersection.
Which would be another way to control the speed, yeah.
I think. You know, unless we add more money to the project, I think it would have to be part of Phase Two. And that that's when it would cross the road anyway, but but we are planning for it here, you know, worst case. If we put a refuge island in, that's why the trails bumped out further in this drawing.
Okay, and so, so, yeah, so that that's what really what I would like to see with this project, in addition to the trail, is is a way to control the speed on peeler. And and the biggest thing is is a commitment, and you've already given this to me, and of working with each of those eleven homeowners individually to find out. What is the most effective way to mitigate their concerns, and if it's possible, there might be a situation where maybe we can't, but rather, you know, rather than presuming that there's an issue, I would prefer to go and and present solutions to them. And and have that discussion. Like, as I said, I've already had some conversations where people have told me that. They find what we're. Proposing to be a good solution, so. Let's let's have this, but that's going to be an important part of this project before it ever moves forward is is having those conversations with each of those residents to make sure that we have. Adequately addressed all of their concerns and that we can, we can do the right thing by them, so that's that's my request moving forward. I think that's really the first step is to reach out to each of those homes. Individually.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, just one more question. I know that we have the bond referendum that's going to be coming in November, and on that bond referendum, we mentioned the. The path plan for Winter's Chapel, which will be directly adjacent to this. If that is approved or not, if it's not approved. Does it make any sense to wait until that referendum happens? Do we decide what the citizens want before we make decisions on this little section of that?
So this particular project, Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, was already, it's already in our capital improvement plan, it's funded through SPOST. It was actually initially, I believe, funded for. Construction this year, but when we put it on hold last year because of the path plan. And in in conversations I've had with you recently on this, probably the earliest we would see construction would be twenty twenty four, if this move, if this were to move forward and be approved.
If it made any sense to wait for the bond referendum, in the sense that it's on the list for the Winter's Chapel, it's a connectivity piece, you're going to be orphaning a piece, I guess is what I'm looking at it from that perspective.
Not, well, we have, we have a grant for the Winter Chapel piece, so.
Just just a point, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
So I just want to understand where we are in the process, so. We're trying to finish the design for this.
Yeah, we have a concept design, and before we. Dig into the real detailed design, we wanted, you know, we presented it to the public, but we had not presented it to the council until now. So we wanted to do that. And then, you know, if what the council wants, we can go meet with the property owners. Try to work through those issues. And if we're able to do that, then the next step would be to finish the design. Go get the easements and work with utilities and move to construction, but right now, we're just at the very beginnings of of real design.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? So I have some questions and a lot of concerns. Okay. So will you pull up the picture that shows the south side? So. I support paths, I also sometimes support the path of least resistance. And how wide is this sidewalk on the south side?
Five feet.
Five feet. So is it possible to add a foot to that sidewalk? Because now what we're saying is is we're going to have a multipurpose trail that comes to an end on a street that people consistently complain about crossing. We're going to try to put a safer crossing there. But. We don't know if it's going to work or not, and we're now saying that's in Phase Two anyway, the safer crossing, but I guess then the rest of the path. What I'm wondering about, so. We have to come to some agreement with these neighbors, or I can't support this. We've always been successful, like with sidewalk projects and things. Working out details, we curve around trees, we do different, you know, strategies. The topography of this particular parcel makes it complicated, but in addition, we have a beautiful shaded. Sidewalk across the street, which we're saying we're going to take away. The trees, because we have to because of the topography, and whatever trees we plant won't provide the shading for years. That's already on the other side of the street, so I wonder, and this is way outside the box. If there's not a way to do protected bike lanes and just keep the sidewalk, if we can't figure it out with the neighbors. That's way out of the box. I don't, I think in an urban built out area, despite what the Path Foundation says, we are not always going to be able to get a ten or twelve foot trail. Easily, and if we wait. Across the city to do that, we may be cutting off our own nose despite our face. And if you had said, we're going to have a beautifully shaded. Whatever on both sides. But this isn't going to be, and the trees we plant will take a while to provide shade, especially given how well shaded the south side is. And so, and also because it's going to continue on the south side. To me, that. Means that we ought to do our best, and even if people have to walk single file. That's why I said we have to do something about bike lanes, but even if people have to walk single file or next to a two by two. To fit on a five or six, I'd like to expand the sidewalk to six feet. But even if they have to walk six feet. Side by side for that stretch. Eventually. It may connect to a wider path. So. In the in the notion of just being able to get something done. Is there any value, and also bike lanes, protected bike lanes might also serve as a slowing traffic down if there's room for them. In this plane. And so in in the nature of getting things done. Avoiding the topography challenges on the north side. Is there any value in looking at what it would take? To put it on the south side with not a twelve foot path, but with some kind of bike lanes. And so that's just a comment, and you can get back to us, you don't have to answer that today. But I have one other question, because I'm beginning to believe that, and I kind of say it half heartedly, that we should have a misery measure for projects. Does this project involve a lot of stormwater work?
It will involve some, but I wouldn't say a lot, and. And we're not, you know, we're not really. Far enough along to really know, but we think that maybe the utilities will not be as much, will not require as much relocation on this.
There's two kinds of stormwater work, work, one is to address any drainage issues we create with our project.
Right.
The other is replacing pipes, old infrastructure, which is what I think we're doing in Georgetown. Right? I mean, we're replacing pipes.
We're adding a lot because there wasn't a.
Right, so we're adding the, so what are we finding underneath here? Or we don't? Or we don't know yet.
We're we're gonna have to add some here, but I, you know, I don't think it's um, it's all going to mostly be along the roadway and I don't think it's going to be. It won't be to the extent that the Gateway Project is. But um, ju- just about every project we do.
Right.
We have to add stormwater because in the old days, they didn't really have as many drainage structures.
And I think that's actually always a good positive to fix. Stormwater so that when we're digging up the road, we're not digging it up twice. I don't object to it. I just think it adds to the complexity of projects.
For sure.
And and I also think we should be billing our paths and our. Paving, whatever has a stormwater component, we should be advertising that to the public because it's not a bad thing. It that we're doing it because we're fixing infrastru- sixty year old infrastructure and making it better, but I do wonder about. Avoiding hard and pushing the easy button. And seeing what we could do, explore on the south side if we could add a bike lane.
When you s- when you say protected bike lanes, are you, are you talking about use widening the sidewalk and making that a? Sort of a one way bike path or are you talking about adding lanes in the road?
Somehow in the road, because the sidewalk's not, if we, if we, if we don't, even if we make the sidewalk six feet. With the exception of the casual cyclists who we already let ride on the sidewalk. We're not, it's not going to be used for cyclists very much, I wouldn't think. But if we could put a, I would think that a protected lane, cycling lane. Or some other cycling tool would also address maybe some of the speeding because by shrinking the road. A little bit, you sometimes address speeding, but my main thing is, is it because we're not going all the way up on the north side? I don't know why we are. Not using the beautiful tra- I know it's not like a regulation side path. But I, it's just so shaded and it's so nice and it's so lovely. It's just so lovely and it's used a lot. And I I don't understand why we can't widen that a little bit and make it work and then we will have the connectivity that we. Want, if we can figure out a way to address the cyclist part. So, and you don't have to answer me today because that was a lot.
Well, I I I'd say just kind of at a high level. You know, you would still have some impacts on the north side because you you uh, the lanes out there today aren't super wide. So I think you'd have to do some road widening. To make enough room for the bike lanes and then you're, you you know. I didn't mention this earlier, but even if you were to put a path on the south side, it still would be. You still really want to put at least a sidewalk on the north side um. For people to at least be able to walk back and forth through the park or.
Think one day we can have a sidewalk on the north side. But I think that. Again, we have a path, a sidewalk, it's beautiful, it's attractive, it's so shaded. Um, and if we could figure out the cycling piece and what that looks like. Potentially, we could get it just done. But everyone up here might disagree with me, but I'm struggling to, I'm going to struggle to support something. That at the moment feels very invasive and it's not because I don't think people can have bass in their backyard. I think the topography. Of the situation makes it really challenging and to to Tom's point, you're going to meet with the neighbors. You're going to see if you can work anything out and you can come back and report to us, but I also think meantime, we can. And I have, you know, I've always been a little, I've been very comfortable with six, uh, five feet's too narrow, we'd have to widen it. But um, so that's just my take, that's my two cents, but I don't think, I mean, I don't think. We're ready to announce a design in the current state we are. I think that. This again is the beginning or the middle of a discussion to try to figure out what can be done, what trees can be saved, what it looks like. And and what, like, I really like the way that, I mean, the Winter Chapel path has come out very nicely. It's. It's a big improvement. It's lovely, but it's not as shaded as what's across, what's already here. And so, um, that's my two cents. Yes.
Could we also consider the, uh, right now it's twelve foot, so potentially ten foot instead? Just just as art of the possible on, you know, um, just to see, because ten foot is still acceptable. And then I just want to respectfully ask if we're asking staff now, Madam Mayor. To take consulting time and billable hours to potentially change and provide some concept design redo for the. City Council to incorporate potentially a buffered cycle tracks along this segment with a wider sidewalk. Is that what you're?
I don't real, I, what I want, I guess the next step is to sit with the neighbors. And see, but also to look at what's already there and use it. And figure out, like, maybe you put a regular, I mean, I don't know what the answer is, and Eric's going to have to figure out staff time and direction. Um, you know, he's going to have to figure out staff time and direction to um. To to.
We paid, we paid consulting for this concept fee, right, Michael? This was a consultant company that paid for that.
Right, so.
Already.
Eric's going to have to figure out, I don't, I don't think w- we're even clear enough up here. To give you direction, except for the step of potential, of talking to neighbors. But from my perspective, you have a shaded path, maybe you do a buffered bike lane or something, but. See what, where we go next, so. Um. So that's Ryan. Sorry, we might eat it up. So we're not, just to be clear to the public, we are not voting on anything tonight. Obviously, this is just a discussion item and we expect a report back in the next whenever, month or two, I guess. Go ahead, Tom.
Just want to, just want to make a point that that the primary concern of the neighbors is the privacy issue and it's because of the elevation. It's because it's higher, you could look in, any facility we put on the north side is regardless of the width of that is going to provide the. Is going to create the same issue. Now, perhaps if not as many trees needed to be removed to accommodate that. That might be a solution, but any any sort of bike facility or sidewalk is going to, whether it's. Four feet or ten feet or twelve feet is going to create the same privacy issue because those people are still going to be essentially in their backyard. So I I just wanted to point that out.
Unless it's narrow enough that we don't have to remove trees. Unless, I mean, I don't, I'm not a, we're not.
A lot of, a lot of the the trees, in it, it different areas have different screening, but a lot of there, there isn't a lot of screening in some of the areas because they're tall pines. Um, the bottom line, the only point I'm trying to make is the number one concern is is meeting with those neighbors and addressing their privacy concerns. And and from, and we can direct the project from there.
Okay.
In my opinion.
All right, that's where we are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we moved twenty-two to infinity and beyond. Michael Starling may never get to present his report. Um, all right, so public comments, all right, have you filled out a card already? Okay, that's fine. You can speak and then fill the card out before you leave, please. You'll have three minutes, but go ahead.
I'm Diane London.
Mm-hmm.
I live a twenty-nine sixty-one Four Oaks Drive, Peeler on the south side is in my backyard. And please excuse that I don't understand the process here, lack of dress code, I just found out this afternoon. So why am I here? Two reasons, fear and trust. I'm fearful about my property values going down. I'm fearful of the security and the lack of. I'm fearful that the the people that are going seventy miles an hour behind my house are going to run over some poor kid. And I'm I'm just having that fear. The trust thing has to do with a lot what you already discussed, meaning. You say one thing, the path people came, spent lots of time here. And they said it's going to be over on the reservoir side. Okay, and then I see it on there that's on the reservoir side, but now I hear that. It's been changed and nobody said why, so I don't trust decision and how the decisions are made here. The other thing is I'm concerned about communication. I want this committee. To give me a process about how do you find out things, because I call over there and. People call me back, but nobody's noticed the answers. It's like siloed. You know, is there a commu- communication process to send emails out when there's meetings and what the agenda is before it's like two days? Because I travel, I go places and I have a fear now that I'm going to go to Italy and come back and find out that they're going to do something that I, that I had no knowledge of. Um. You know, is it the departments that decide things and then they bring it up like I've seen some other things come up and then y'all vote on it? Okay, nobody's ever called me except. Tom Lambert called me back, but nobody approached me or sent me anything in the mail about when things are going to be decided. So there's a communication problem with the city of Dunwoody. All right, now. I want to describe to you what it's like. If I stand tippy toe on a step stool. And look at the top of my fence, my head or chin would be on the road. So the only way that it would ever be. Private safe is if they built the wall up and then and put. A fence like the one across the street, no wooden fence, that's going to turn into looking like it's falling down in a short time. The one across the street has been there ever since I've moved there in two thousand and six and it still looks good. It's sustainable.
Thank you, Miss London.
Is that over?
Yes, ma'am, your time is up.
I want to say one thing, there is already a flooding problem in my backyard and my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up and you can give the card to someone will take the card.
Hello, my name is Krista Singleton. I'm a resident of Dunwoody. I'm a resident of Four Oaks. And um, I am here to, I stayed, I'm I'm a walker, I got my walking shoes, I I walk this area. And I really appreciate hearing from the members of the council that are asking for a pro and con. Because I want to second what my neighbor says. We have not been communicated to. With all due respect, Mr. Lambert, I know you've been in, but not all of us who live on that row. Are getting the same amount of information. The previous contractor that was coming. Who we saw had conflicts of interest because he was a contractor with the city, but yet he worked for previous projects. He was in and out, one thing to one neighbor, one thing to something else. What you all proposed today, wo- would it equal fair? Pros, cons would be of use to us who live in that space. I am one of those who's on the road, but on the side. That part that butts up against um, did a cap counting of the road. I have had individuals walk through that house. I have lived in that house for sixteen years. And every year I got to deal with some teenager, some person walking through that path. So now you're talking about building another pathway to make it even more open for people like me who love to walk, but now they're going to be walking in. So if this path goes for, so thank you, Madam Mayor, for suggesting the bike path, because I think that's a reasonable pathway. No pun intended, but if you put something there, you've got to put a significant wall. And this concept of trees coming later, we all know it takes thirty years to grow a good tree. So we just took some of them out that hit our yard. So if you go down this. Project path, then put something up that's got to be taller than Diane London. It has to be that way. You cannot do this and have people coming into our yards. You can't have teenagers, you open it up to widen, they're going to come through. And the concept of putting some sort of, when the path people came, um, engineering piece to slow the traffic, you got to do that as well. I've got a teenage kid now who is trying to learn how to drive out of that space, people speeding at sixty miles an hour all night long. We can't have that, so build the pathway and put things in the road to do that, but thank you for the pro and con. We'll be looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. That, there's no more public comments, no more public. Um, city manager comments?
We do not need an executive, executive session and that concludes the business staff has.
Okay, council comments, Tom.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I was going to bring this up at the last meeting, but the meeting ran long, so I'm like, I'll, I'll just do it at the next meeting. That that'll be shorter.
Right.
Bad plan there. But I don't want to keep pointing this down the road, so I I'll go ahead and do this tonight. Um, a couple of weeks ago, right before the end of the school year, I had the privilege, I was actually invited to Chestnut. Uh, elementary school for their career day and got to spend time with the fifth grade classes there and uh, discuss my role as a city council person. Um, and uh, going in, I thought it would be. Uh, pretty boring for me to just get up there and talk about government and lecture fifth graders. Uh. So we we talked a little bit about the job, but then we got into, we, I thought it would be more fun to do a, an exercise with them. So we talked about how government works and that. They are residents of the city and they have a voice as well, so I asked them what they wanted this, what what did Dunwoody need that we didn't have? And I promised them I would share that with the uh, with the mayor and council and staff. I will send you an email of the complete list. I am not going to go over the complete list tonight, but I'll just highlight a few things. Um, that the fifth grade class, I said that we need to have a lake. There were a lot of athletic needs, uh, football fields. Uh, bigger, wider sidewalks, more basketball courts. Uh, an interesting one with the basketball, they said lower basketball rims for for younger players, which I thought was a good, good one. Um. We need cafes near the playgrounds, I, fifth graders, fifth graders, this is coming from. Wider bike lanes, more parks, water fountains, sports parks with lots of fields and then, and then I got into things that weren't. Perhaps city related and we had that discussion too. We need uh, more boba shops, uh, arcades, amusement parks. A water park, more Chick-fil-A's and um, this one I had to actually look up. One kid said we need to have prime drink and it's. Uh, and we we discussed marketing, so it's an energy drink that is not recommended for children under eighteen, so. Just just for the record, but I will forward the complete list to you for your reading pleasure, uh. But I I promised the fifth graders I would share that with you, so there it is.
Thank you. Anyone else, council? I, uh, need a motion to adjourn. Oh, for, yeah, the next, we won't be here before the Fourth of July. The parade is the Fourth of July. In the morning, down Mount Vernon from Orchard Park to the Village. Join us, it's the largest parade in the state.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion stands adjourned. Thank you.